Good evening and welcome to this Pasco City Council regular meeting of October 7th, 2024. The city council thinks you're right being a part of your city government. And at these meetings, these regular meetings, the city takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available for those in present on that small table immediately to your right as you walk in, or for those following along at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Richland and in Pasco, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meetings is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit comments and/or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, Ms. Clerk?
Councilmember Barajas?
She is excused for the evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Blaisdell?
Present.
Councilmember Grimm?
Here.
Councilmember Harbster?
Present.
Councilmember Peralas?
Here.
Mayor Potem Milne?
Present.
And Mayor Serrano.
I am present.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have the treat of tonight of two Girl Scout troops, Troops 905 and 902. Did you say that a special name for these? I apologize. The Go-getters, they are Go-getters being here at 7:05 on a Monday evening. So if you would like to come up and however you're going to lead it, you know, if you'll lead us in the pledge, we will follow orders. Do you want us to stand?
Okay. .....................................................................................................................
Thank you, ladies. We greatly appreciate that. And I will recognize that Mr. Newberry is patiently waiting online for his comment, which we'll roll into after the consent agenda when we get to public comment period. Sorry, I'm just looking. We have a couple presentations ahead of that. That's all right. We're working in. With that, our consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. They will be enacted by a rule call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member further desires that discussion, then it can be removed to the regular agenda and considered separately. So with that, item 4A is approval of the meeting minutes of the September 16th, September 23rd, and October 3rd, 2024 city council meetings. Item B is bills and communications approving claims of the total amount of $10,897,000. Eight, $10,897,656.33. Item C, resolution number 4499, the 2025 community development block grant annual work plan allocations. Item D, resolution number 4500, the 2025 home annual work plan and allocations. Finally, item E, resolution number 4501, project acceptance for wastewater treatment plant Phase 2B outfall replacement project.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Start it.
Got a motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Ms. Blaisdell. Do we have anyone desiring to remove anything? Hearing none. Ms. Clerk?
I had my mind on something else.
Okay.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
Yes.
Grimm?
Yes.
Harbster?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Milne?
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 5, which is proclamations and acknowledgements. There are none listed. With that, we will move on to item number 6, which is the public comment period I mentioned a minute ago. The public may address city council on any item unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide for a venue for debate or for the opposing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time in a deliberative process with additional information from potentially a number of input sources. Some questions are best directed at staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will be limited to three minutes as shown by the clock. And if there are additional comments that are necessary, again, they can be submitted via, you know, our Ask Pasco app, the city manager or the city clerk. So with that, please state your name and your city of residence as you approach the mic. Again, I understand, we'll start with the Mr. Newberry, who I believe is online. So with that, let's start with him.
Yes, Mayor.
We can...
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's Brian Newberry.
Yeah, we got you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for letting me do this. I know this is a little awkward here. I, I'm tracking the three minutes. I just wanted to celebrate Pasco for your support of our Go-getters and our Girl Scouts. And I'm the CEO. My name is Brian Newberry. My actual city of residence is Spokane, but I guess my business address down there is on Burden Avenue, right across from Go-Getter Stadium. I just want to celebrate what your Go-getters have been doing over here. Vanessa, she's still in the room. Thank you, Vanessa, for all that you've done. But the bottom line on the matter is, as a membership organization, we just finished here in the last week peaking over 4,300 Girl Scouts. And I think you'd all agree that the more Girl Scouts we have in the world, the better. This Friday is Day of the Girl. It's the 12th year since the United Nations said every girl voice in this world matters, and our Girl Scout voices matter. So we are growing right now. And just a couple years ago, when we opened up our store on Burden Avenue across from Dust Devils, it was a chance. It was a chance. We weren't sure. We hadn't had brick and mortar down in the Tri-Cities area since 2014. And we said, let's do this. Let's go for it. Because all of our freeways to our success go through your community. And honestly, Mayor, it has been incredible. And Pasco has been such a hospitality for our Girl Scouts. Again, our membership's on the growth, three years of a million cookies growing. And we're just trying to show the world that we're able to do what other membership organizations can do, and that's grow. We are top 10 in the nation right now out of 110 councils for our membership growth. That's your Girl Scouts. And your Girl Scouts last year had over 39,000 boxes donated to our US military, many given to veterans hospitals down in your area down there. So I'll just close with letting you know that I know we drop cookies off for you. We are able to keep our cookies next year in 2025 priced at $5 a box. So hopefully that generates a few smiles in the room. We haven't raised prices since 2016. Only 25% of councils are at $5 a box. And that's because our council is growing because you have the best Girl Scouts in America. So thank you, Vanessa, for what you do for Go-getters. She's done with Go-getters in three years at three elementaries, what it's taken Spokane to do 10 years. Pasco rocks. You are our home base down there, and you make our world a better place. Thank you, council. God bless Pasco, and thank you for all you do to make our Girl Scouts the best in America. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Thank you for joining us remotely. Thank you for the comments. And we appreciate your girls and the staff that work here to, you know, keep them actively engaged in the communities and making sure that we're well-fed.
Roger that. Thank you, sir. We have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a great night. With that, moving to public comment for folks in person, if you'd like to make a public comment, now is your opportunity, again, unless it relates to a public hearing that's further along in the agenda. Sir, on the back? If you can turn on the mic at the base. There we go. Red light's good.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, City Council, wanted to just say thank you. I've got three things I want to talk about real quick. One minute, huh? One was the mural. We got our mural up on our Moon Security West Wall there. I hope everybody's going to see it. I wanted to thank Blanche Barajas, who was City Councilman?
Woman.
For being able to attend. Leo Peralas, thank you very much, as well as David Milne. Want to thank you that. Wanted to make sure that we recognize our company worked with Pasco School District, Guards Commission. Angela, thank you very much. We made that happen. And Saul Martinez, and I see Raul back in the back there, just want to say thank you for that. We were able to put out three $1,000 scholarships, not city money. It's our money that we were able to do. The students that were recognized was Ella Lehman, Aleah Mahaffey, as well as Zahara Asalito. I'm going to probably ruin that last name for it. Second thing, good. I'm also the Franklin County Commissioners, Franklin County citizens for the sales tax that were out there proposing. So I want to say thank you for the city for providing that resolution of support for that. That's needed as to just make sure that we have good communication going on with our responders. We want to make sure that we have interoperability. Don't ask me to say that 10 times. But the whole fact of the matter is, this community, Franklin County, needs to make sure that we do it on our end for all of our first responders and our citizens, as well as be able to help support those in Benton County to make sure that they're able to do that as well. Okay, last thing. I happen to also have a different hat on, and that's the LBA Advisory Board member. And I know that we have some stuff coming up that we're asking for us to be a help, to be a partner with the city of Pasco for events and other economic development. And so I ask for your support in that matter as well. 52 seconds left. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any additional public comment? Mr. Cortinas?
Mayor, I'll take Mike Miller's 50 seconds left.
No, unfortunately, can't beat him to you.
Can't do that. Thank you. Mayor and council members and administration, I'm here representing the General Board, and Mike is here representing the Advisory Board of the Latin Business Association. We just want to give you thanks for the opportunity of working with the Parks and Recreation and Jesse. It was a great opportunity that we were given that opportunity to work with the Cinco de Mayo and the Fire Food Festival, where both events were very successful. Even with other bigger events going on during the Fire Food Festival, we tend to still get a good turnout and a big, big crowd. The contests and bringing in new sponsors to the Fire Food Festival, like Supermax, who has never been part of any festivals downtown, and looking forward to come back next year and come back with bigger dollars as a sponsor. LBA was able to bring them on and working with others and looking forward to the future. The letter of intent that we sent to the administrator, Adam Lincoln, and he forwarded on to all of you, the ask is that we are recognized as the official downtown, and the city of Pasco recognize us as the official nonprofit organization and working with you in hand-in-hand, and continue making Pasco the best place to live, the best place to do business, and the best place to visit. We believe that downtown Pasco needs our direction, our leadership, and we believe that we've done that in showing good faith to working with these business owners. Since 20, since the COVID, the business owners downtown called us and asked us to step in because they felt they weren't being looked at, they weren't being helped. And so we immediately applied for some grants and received close to half a million dollars worth of grants. We were able to feed that money into some of those businesses downtown so that they weren't, so they didn't have to close their doors. We continue helping them even during the problems with the, with the bridge and paid a lot of their past due bills, their garbage, their water, their electric bills, where some had to close down because of the construction. That's the things that we do here in Pasco. Our offices are 411 West Clark in downtown Pasco. We think we're settled here, settled in here in Pasco. We'd like you, as council members, to look at us and see us as a partner with you and be the official nonprofit organization to continue helping you with your festivals, helping you with all the other items, economic development, and your master plan downtown. Thank you again, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Man?
I am here to talk about the homeless people. We are being treated totally, completely disrespected. We're being, our amendments are being violated. And then we also have the problem with the park ranger too. I mean, I'm having a problem with the park ranger. He's harassing me. He's discriminating me. My friend in the back, he tried to purposely run him over. He's already ran over two people, you know? He's just doing too much. Why is he actually working? What is, what is he doing? Has the crime rate dropped? No. People smoking drugs in the park, has that dropped? No. What is it he's actually being paid for? I mean, he just harasses me. He harasses me all the time. He's got Port of Pasco people watching me, watching me with binoculars and stuff, you know, following me and stuff. For what? What is it I'm doing? If I'm breaking the law, then please call the police on me and let them know, you know? It's like he just harasses me everywhere I go. Everywhere I go, you can check all the reports. He's called the police on, he calls the police on me, says I'm trespassing when I'm not even trespassed from the park. And he says I'm smoking meth and what else was, oh, I'm camping in the park. And it's like, you know, it's like, but it just goes on and on. Like, the police, they wake us up, they wait until we're asleep, nice and good, then wake us up between the hours of 1:00 and 3:00 a.m. and make us be out on this, literally out on the streets again. We trespass, they're trespassing us from everywhere, and there's not even signs posted. There's no smoke, they say there's no smoking in any parks. We understand there's no smoking in Peanuts Park, but not the other parks aren't, aren't posted with that. We have no restrooms anywhere in the park, yes, a porta potty, but we can't use those past 10 o'clock. We can't have a blanket in the park. We can't have a stroller in the park. We can't lie down in the park. We can't have personal property in the park. It's just, it just goes on and on and on and on. You know, they tell us they, people are assaulting us. People are throwing, and it's the same people. And if you think I'm lying, check the cameras on the mission over at the men's mission. They should have the first incident that happened when some guys showed up at two, three cars, and they just started attacking us. Then it goes on. They're throwing full bottles of water at us. They're throwing full bottles of Gatorade at us. They've come out with pellet guns. They've thrown fireworks at people. And then now there's a whole, there's, now there's different people. It's like, our lives matter too, you know? We're, we're just because I don't have a house over my, my head, doesn't mean that I'm a bad person, you know? I'm out on the streets because somebody wasn't doing their job. And but, I mean, we all have a different story and stuff, but you know, we still do deserve to be treated like humans too, you know? It's like, and this just keeps going on and on. I've, I've talked, I've left Jesse a message. I've written him a note. I've been to the police department. I've been here to the city clerks about the park ranger because he just harasses me and harasses me and harasses me and harasses me and harasses me, and it doesn't stop. It's almost on a daily basis, you know? And, and, and I'd like to know what is it he, he's getting paid to do? He doesn't clean the parks.
Ma'am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
Okay.
Any additional public comment? Go ahead. See your hands.
Just on?
Yep.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco Flood Plain resident for over 30 years. This is a public records request via RCW 42.56. Has Pasco and Hayden Homes been issued permits from the Department of Fish and Wildlife to kill eight floodplain American bald eagles? Has Pasco been issued a number 404 permit from the US Army Corps of Engineers regarding the floodplain Riverview East Lift Station and for the floodplain Central Community Park? Also, has Pasco provided a final design, final design reviews for all of the above, including the spot zoning at 52nd and Wernat by Hayden Homes, as well as percolate reports and sewer ruptures three times? Regarding Tri-City Animal Control, or as I call it, Tri-City Research Provider Trap, with a step to replace death and a step for life, has Pasco appointed a citizens group to oversee Tri-City Animal Control? How many animals has Director Ben Ziegler sent to WSU? Has Pasco replaced the stolen and missing donation money of $375,000 in the Rainy Day Fund, taken from past employees Chambers, Howard, and Angela Zeiler, respectively? Has Pasco Council Meeting on 4/1/19 been restored to YouTube? You can see Pasco Attorney Lee Kerr's comments on due process emissions, as well as his comments on the WSU contract and more. Regarding Pasco's CIP budget of 534,512,597,2, over a half a billion dollars, how much of that is going to the Martin Luther King Center, the Boys and Girls Club, a low-barrier homeless shelter, and a no-kill animal shelter with a spay neuter clinic? In addition to cutting ties with WSU, does Pasco have a current list of all other animal control facilities and animal rescue groups who send animals to WSU for research? You can get that list from WSU President Kirk Schultz. Email president@wsu.edu or call 509-335-4200. My comments tonight are for the record and to put Pasco on notice. Under three.
Nice. Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments? Sir?
Hey, how you guys doing? I know we only have three minutes. I'm a big strong kid. I have aftershock. We had a bad avalanche, similar to the ones after St. Helens. A lot of people left out the flooding and the avalanches that occurred and exactly right up on the Columbia, Columbia Park Mall. It also goes up to Perry Street on West, on West Kenwick Avenue and up Seventh, well, down Moraine to like Seventh Avenue and under the 395 corridor. What I'm saying is the 395 corridor is saturated, and all the concrete that we put there is falling under. And you need to check your wives because we were hard at work. One day it popped. You need to check right behind their ears and their belly buttons. The stem of the, or the other tail. This is normal aftershock from an avalanche. There's also a fire beneath the blue bridge on the Pasco side. Not the blue bridge, the cable bridge on the Pasco side. That's why the avalanche is going to get much worse. It's all under there and it's on fire. It ain't going to take me three minutes. I told you, I'm trying to heal, but thanks a lot. The rest of the kids are not going to be strongly healthy like us. They need to get their things out in the saturated areas. I was lucky enough to just move back in Pasco three, well, five weeks ago. But those kids over there are not going to be strongly educated. We're going to have to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment tonight? Gone once? Gone twice? Third call? Okay, with that, public comment is now closed. This moves us on to item number, item number seven, which is reports from committees and officers. Do we have any reports from our council members? Mr., Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I did attend a few events. I did attend the Hispanic Chamber last Tuesday. I got to hear the good presentation by Director Gonzalez. So I appreciate that good presentation. And then this, the week, last week, I did have the blessing of attending the mini-pitch grand opening event with Rave and Sounders FC, since you weren't, you were busy. So I got to give this speech. So thank you for giving me that opportunity. And we had Councilwoman Blaisdell. And later on, I saw Councilwoman Blanche Barajas. And we had Charles Grimm with Councilman Charles Grimm, with this whole family was there. So anyway, it was a good time, a good speech, and a good event. Yeah, I was glad that Rave and the Sounders are able to be part of our great community. And then also, I did attend the Tri-City Chamber Leaders Reception. I was a little late, but I did see other council members there. So thanks for that event as well. And yes, and then I also had a meeting with the staff via Zoom as far as on our audit. So very busy. So thank you.
I do apologize. Thank you, Mr. Milne. I do apologize. I hadn't scrolled all the way down. Usually this is item A out of that seven. We'll swing back to this and see where it's appropriate. And I do apologize for our folks that are 7A and B. So with that, we'll go back up to 7A, which is the update on the Hanford cleanup. Mr. Lincoln will kick it off for Mr. Vance, Mr. Vance and Mr. Buehl, or however you guys are going to do it.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Vance, we have tonight, he's the manager of the US DOE's Hanford Field Office. He manages an overall budget of $3 billion and an oversight of more than 13,000 employees, working on environmental cleanup at the 586 square mile Hanford site. He's responsible for the safe, efficient, and effective cleanup of the site, which includes numerous projects and operations, which he will brief you on during his remarks tonight. Brian has more than 30 years of experience in the nuclear industry. He served in the United States Navy for 25 years as a newcomer submarine officer and is retired captain from 2009. Thanks for being here, Mr. Vance.
Great. Thank you. I really appreciate, Mayor, the opportunity and the council as well. I think it's really important for the Hanford Site team to be connected with the community and make sure that you understand the work that's going on out there and really have appreciation of the types of things we're doing. I try to provide updates periodically, but it's a fast-moving world, and I want to, I appreciate this opportunity to provide the update. If I can make this work. Oh, I got it. Okay. That's the hardest thing I had to do today. I'm just kidding. And please don't start that clock. Three minutes for Hanford is a speed date. So I joined you today, really in our first, second, our second week as the Hanford Field Office. Previously, we were two, two different DOE offices. Officer River Protection was the Tank Farms Mission. Office of, Risen Operations Office was the rest of the site. Created that difference, the two-site model in about 1998, language that went into effect in 1999. And over time, we've, really over the last several years, we've pulled the site team together, really as a testament to what we've accomplished, but also set out some for success going forward. So really pleased with that outcome, and it's taken a few years to get there. All right. I thought I had it. Okay. So just a quick overview. The Hanford site is 586 square miles. About 50 miles of the Columbia River run through the site. We are, really have one mission, and that's a safe, efficient, effective cleanup of the Hanford site after the nearly 50 years of the National Security Mission. We, I leave the key activities up there just to give a perspective on the range of activities occurring every day across the site, not only base operations, which I'll talk about a little bit later, but also the, the mission areas, the treatment of the tank waste mission, which we're really at the cusp of right now, stabilization of aging infrastructure, structures, demolish facilities, remediate soil, and then we also remediate contaminated groundwater. On the magnitudes across the nation that are really staggering compared to the other sites in the EM complex doing that work, we're one of 15 sites, but we're the largest site, really by an order of magnitude from all the other sites combined. Our focus areas as a leadership team, health and safety of our workforce first and foremost. But really, the transition that we're leading for the site is a transition back into operations as we prepare for tank waste operations. And then we want to serve as a fair and demanding customer to our contractors, be constructively engaged with our stakeholders, and really create a dynamic on the site that reflects teamwork that's necessary to progress the site mission. Think I cracked the code. So from a budget perspective, if you look at the upper right-hand corner, we've executed almost $70 million, $70 billion in the cleanup mission since 1989, when the mission transitioned from national security to cleanup. Our budgets over the last several years, you can see the upper left, we just went over $3 billion in fiscal '24. over $3 billion in fiscal '24. And within that framework, we still subcontract or our prime contractor subcontract nearly a half a billion dollars each year to businesses that are largely in the Tri-Cities and beyond. So beyond, from an economic perspective, I see the Hanford Site as the economic foundation of the Tri-Cities and beyond the site itself, the small businesses that were started with Hanford diversifying really creates a very strong fundamental underpinning for the economic future of the community. We are a team of six prime contractors, again, one DOE team now. My staff between federal employees, which is just over 300, and support contractors about 500. We oversee the work of the six prime contractors. They employ about 10,000 people, and then the rest of the number of people that fill out, the 12,000 to 13,000 really subcontractors. So we employ about 12,000 to 13,000 people in supporting the site mission every single year. And you see the One Hanford logo there, that was really a galvanizing approach to bringing the team back together, not only the two DOE offices, but all of our contractors to operate as a single enterprise, to create a seamless, integrated risk management profile, executing the $3 billion, and really getting everyone aligned in the mission of the Hanford Cleanup Site. Our engagement arena is pretty complex. I show this to you because typically, as political, you know, politicians, you understand the broader arena that we all operate in. But from a federal level, through Congress and many of the departments, Department of Justice, Interior, Labor, through the state environment, through the Department of Ecology, Department of Health, and the state of Washington itself, State of Oregon is connected to the site, we have an Oregon Hanford Cleanup Board, and then we also have the Hanford Advisory Board and a number of local organizations, as well as the Tri-DEC or Tri-Cities Development Corporation. In addition to the labor organizations, our tenant organizations, and the Hanford Contractors and the tribal governments, we have four tribes associated with the Hanford Site, three treaty tribes, and the Wannapum Band. So in this environment, our goal is to make sure that we're reaching out to every different group and building awareness and ultimately support for the very important and challenging mission we execute. Just a little bit about what we've accomplished. People don't always talk about Hanford as a success story, but they don't always understand the bigger picture. And Hanford, over the last 35 years, has been a significant success story. As we think about, we've got nine reactors along the river, seven are cocooned, one's a National Historical Park, and the last one, K West Reactor, is cold and dark today, on the path to be in a position preserved and cocooned, like the other reactors, in the next couple of years. We've demolished nine, over 900 facilities, remediated over 1,000 waste sites, we treated 34 billion gallons of groundwater to remove contaminants, and today, we have treated in the lower bottom, right quadrant there, we've treated over 640,000 gallons that's ready to send to the waste treatment plant next year to start the vitrification process for the low-activity waste portion of waste. So really, a record of accomplishment across that period of time and built the infrastructure to set up for the next chapter of the Hanford Cleanup Mission. A little bit of a view of the Tank Farms Mission, and this is, I like this view because you can see Rainier and Adams in the background. The foreground is the 65-acre waste treatment plant. This is a little bit of an older picture. And then the Tank Farms in the east, there's 11 Tank Farms there, the green are single-shelled tanks, the blue are double-shelled tanks. And then the 200 West area is five to seven miles away with the remainder of the tanks. Our mission overall is to retrieve all the waste from all the tanks in the Hanford Site and ultimately safely disposition it for the long term. The exciting part for us today is low-activity waste facility is in the commissioning process. We have two melters operating at 2100 degrees. We're going through really the final stages before we start cold commissioning, which is to deliver, I'll say it's not radioactive waste, but it's spiked chemical waste to replicate the chemical aspects of treating tank waste. We should be starting that within the next few weeks. So really excited about where we are at the site and the progress we're making there. And this just gives a little bit of a slice just through the central plateau of the tank waste mission overall. And then just a couple of things, that upper-left-hand picture doesn't look exciting, but to me that's really exciting. That was the first glass poured out of Melter 1 into one of our large containers last fall. We've done that with Melter 2 as well, and so we've got two hot melters, and you can see the melters there, 310 melters, both hot and in the commissioning process. So the waste treatment plant is alive and operating today. On lower left, you can see a pad at the Integrated Disposal Facility, so it's really a system of systems at the Hanford Site. So upstream of the waste treatment plant, the Tank Farms operated by Washington River Protection Solution, they prepare the tank waste for, to be sent over to the waste treatment plant under Bechtel. The byproducts or the go-to additional facilities managed by the Tank Farms Contractor, and then actually the products of the work get sent to the Integrated Disposal Facility seen there. Those are the large glass containers operated by the Central Plateau Contractor, and all of this, under the support of Hanford Mission Integrated Solutions Contractor, water, power, sewer roads, all those. And so the One Hanford concept, we had to put that in place to get the site team to start reimagining the site as a single enterprise to create the opportunities for success going forward. Just a couple other examples, you know, we recently completed holistic agreement with the State of Washington and the Environmental Protection Agency, which really sets the course on the tank waste mission, which includes work, upper-left at the High-Live Waste Facility. We're gonna be in the design phase now, between now and 2027, and then in 2028, we'll get, we'll work towards an agreement or a decision, critical decision, we call it, within the process, to start full construction on the waste treatment plant, once it's the High-Live Waste Facility portion of the waste treatment plant, once we get there. That de-risks the mission or that part of the mission. But you can see, we're still doing limited construction to set conditions for that in the future. So that's exciting. We are still retrieving tanks. We completed retrieval of the AX Farm Tanks, which is in addition to the C Farm Tanks, finished a few years ago. And we're moving on to A Farm. We're in the first tank of A Farm now, and so we're continuing to work the process of retrieving tanks. We still have quite a ways to go, but retrieval of those tanks just adds stock to what we'll send over to the waste treatment plant to be vitrified over, either as low activity or high-level waste in the future. The risk reduction projects, sort of the second product line, were the traditional things that you think about with the waste treatment plant. The upper-right is a great picture because that's the K West Basin. That was 1.2 million gallons of water that had been in that basin right behind the reactor for, since the 1950s, where the spent fuel would be sent and cooled before it was sent down for processing. That's about 300 yards from the Columbia River. That basin is now empty and grouted, so it doesn't represent a risk to the river any longer, and that's why we can take that facility to Cold and Dark. So that's, that was a major success just in August of this year. Upper-left, you can see the work that's gonna go on. We have cesium-estronium capsules in wet storage at the Hanford Site post Fukushima. We looked at all the wet storage across the nuclear industry, decided we wanted to move those capsules from wet to dry. I'm really excited about that because we're in the process now of doing all the testing with the equipment that's already installed in the facility. We'll start moving our first capsule next year. We are also always working to upgrade our groundwater program. Lower-left doesn't look exciting, but it's exciting because we're able to increase the flow of our 200 West groundwater station from 2,500 gallons per minute to 3,400 million, 3,400 gallons per minute, which we treat about a billion gallons in that one facility on the central plateau, and then about a billion along the river. And so it's exciting to operate there. And then the lower right is just some of the continuing demolition that we do, just to continue to reduce the risk profile overall of the site. So each of those individual activities is part of the risk reduction profile. We still have infrastructure, water, power, sewer roads, you know, we've got to be able to maintain the site. So we have water, meteorological towers on the site to help with the weather aspects of some of the work we do. The middle picture, that tank's full of water now, but that's our new water plant. We're in the process of building a plant to replace the 1943 water plant that still operates today, produce potable water. Now, what a great plant, but I can't fix it if it breaks anymore. So it was time for a new plant. We're building something very similar to Pasco. And then we're upgrading our infrastructure for electrical distribution on the site, just to enhance reliability to support the waste treatment plant. Base operations, you know, we run all the facilities that the county does and the cities do, firefighting, patrol for security, and the Hammer Training Center, training our workforce on a broad range of activities to go out so they can safely work on the site. Part of base ops, we're really proud of what those folks do and really continue to make sure the site stays in a safe and secure configuration. From an outlook cleanup perspective, we are in a really positive place with a very strong, positive trajectory for the site. We operate in a virtuous circle type of an environment where, when we are able to successfully and safely deliver predictable cleanup progress, we can talk about that progress, build support around that stakeholder wheel that I talked about. That stakeholder wheel encourages Congress to send more money to the Hanford Site, and the money is the, basically the fuel that allows us to continue to progress the mission. And so we work very hard to ensure that not only are we delivering safely, effectively, predictably, the cleanup progress, but also engaging with a broad range of stakeholders almost continuously to make sure that we're telling the story of Hanford in a way that's accessible and that people really can see, given, despite the complexity of the work we do, the regulatory environment, all those other aspects of the site that make uniquely challenging, we're delivering real progress and real taxpayer value, which creates the opportunity to continue the mission and really drive the overall length of the mission as short as we possibly can. We're gonna be there for a while, but the, our goal is to find ways to accelerate the overall mission, reduce the liability of the nation to clean up the Hanford Site and release as much as we can for other uses in the future as we progress. This is our new logo, so it's really effectively brand-new. One star for each of the reactors along the river, from the trivia question, if you get that trivia question. But like I said, the One Hanford approach to business has been important for us in making the transition, because it really is redefining how we think about the site and how we work together as a team. And you can't be successful in something as big as Hanford unless there's a team environment. I really went through that quickly. You know, I'll encourage you all to come out and take a tour. A four-hour tour is about a 30% visit of the Hanford Site, so I'll ask you to come and see us as soon as you possibly can, because I don't, it's hard to describe Hanford if you haven't been there, if you haven't seen what we do, and beyond what we can show you what we're accomplishing, what's I think newer and eye-opening, and I was able to bring out a number of the state legislators out over the last two years, to have them, you know, introduce them to our team, the department team, our contractor partners, and the synergy and energy of that team really changes the way people think about Hanford. So we're in a transitional phase in lots of different dimensions, but I hope that you'll take the time to come out and visit the site, see what we're doing, and meet the members of your community who really have a big impact out there, and I wanted to leave time for you to ask questions. And I'll just qualify that to say, you probably can hurt my feelings, lots of people try all the time, so I'm happy to take any questions and I appreciate the opportunity again.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Harpster?
Thanks for the presentation. I work in land development, nobody's obviously building homes at the site, so bear with me through some of my questions that may seem a little ignorant. Firstly, this board is representative of the Hanford Communities Board, and one of the items of discussion lately has been the third tank that was recently discovered to be leaking. What's being done by DOE to address that new leak and prevent, you know, further leakage from that specific tank and other tanks in the area?
Now, thanks for the question. We really have a very robust tank integrity program to continue to monitor the tanks. Many of the tanks, some of the tanks were built as early as 1943, 1944, across the entire spectrum. My newest tanks were completed in 1986, which are the newer double-shelled tanks. This, in that process, in the tank integrity process, there's a couple aspects. One is the ensuring that the tanks maintain their physical integrity. Second part, really in the double-shelled tanks, is the chemical management to manage corrosion in the tanks so that we can continue to keep those tanks viable for as long as we possibly can. The single-shelled tanks, like T-101, which is the tank you referenced, in the 80s and 90s and into the early 2000s, we went through a process called interim stabilization. We took as much of the liquid out of those tanks as we could, just to reduce the risk that there would be additional leakage if a tank was found to be leaking. So T-101 specifically, we identified it in a normal process in the March-April timeframe, identified the potential that there was a picture inside the tank that showed a little bit of a difference in the level in the tank. And what we're really talking about is a 75-foot tank, so it's very small changes in vertical distance represented, sort of like they call it the beachfront change, on the ripples of the other materials in there, because it's not all liquid. We went through a leak assessment process that concluded in August, identified the potential that that tank was leaking about 200 gallons per year into the soil. And each of those underground, those double-shelled, those single-shelled tanks and double-shelled tanks, they're underground tanks. So they're generally nine to 12 feet below the surface, just the top of the tank. Most of the tank contents are at the bottom of the tank, generally 30 to 40 feet below the surface. So when you think about 200 gallons per minute in a tank that's, I'll say, 40 feet below the surface, there's no risk to personnel. That contamination is not gonna reach the surface and put our workers at risk. It cannot leave that area because that area is under active groundwater mitigation, so the contamination can't ever reach the Columbia River. And so when we look at the broader risk profile from the site and that area specifically, during the national security mission, we assessed about 300,000 to 400,000 gallons of tank waste leaked into the soils there. And then purposely, as a part of the way that the site was operated, there was tens of millions of gallons of tank waste discharged directly to the soil in cribs and vaults underground. That's why the groundwater is being treated there, to take all those contaminants out. So what we do when we have a leaking tank like that, we look at the entire risk profile of the site. It doesn't represent a risk, it doesn't change the risk profile right now. We work with the State of Washington, we have a series of processes we go through with the State of Washington relative to the regulatory basis, and we'll do things like enhance the routine that we monitor tank levels and the potential for leakage. We look at areas where there could be end leakage to the tanks, because sometimes rainwater or snowmelt can get in. We want to cap that off and make sure there is no additional leakage into the tank. And then ultimately, we look at where does it fall within the broader risk profile of the site? And in reality, it doesn't even move the needle. And so we'll continue to monitor that, continue to look at areas where we can limit end leakage. I'll work with the State of Washington on the regulatory processes to put an appropriate boundary around that tank, and a cover on the tank to prevent those other drivers, but that's really it. And so from, again, from my perspective, leaking tanks are never good, but at the macro level, because it doesn't change the risk profile, it's one of the just things we have to manage as we continue the mission.
Okay. And if I remember correctly, there's only three actively leaking of 177?
There's three, there's three of 177 actively leaking, T-111, B-109, T-101. Now, during the characterization of all the tanks, there were between 50 and 60 that were defined as assumed leakers, so that means they leaked at some point in the past, but those other tanks have not been determined to be actively leaking, actively leaking at this point.
And then you mentioned rainwater. How does, how do you prevent further leakage when it rains?
Well, there's covers that we can put. Each of the, each of the tanks has risers that come through. Sometimes there's valve pits associated with being able to go in and out of the tank to move liquids, or in the past we did that. So there's different cover scenarios that they can put on those tanks to really clamp those down a little bit better, so that it reduces that possibility of leakage in. And then in the tank farms themselves, we can put, we have plans to put covers across the tanks, the tank farms, really effectively like an asphalt cover, so that anything that comes onto the surface will run off into an area called an evapotranspiration basin that we have off to the side, so there's no driver to drive the contamination closer to groundwater. And so we'll, we'll put those all into place as well.
And then the picture of the site, so you know, the Columbia River kind of does a loop over the north end of it. How close are the tanks to the river in that area?
Generally, we're talking it's some seven, seven miles or so. And again, because of the aggressive groundwater wells in that area, like in B Farm, when B-109 tank was leaking, we take 6,000 gallons per month out of that tank farm. So there's nothing that's not going to an extraction well, very similar to what we have in the T Farm area.
Since the cleanup started in 89, how many gallons of contaminated waste have leaked into the ground?
That's hard to predict. I would say, you know, we only, we really focus on historical numbers in each of the tanker, so if you look at...
That's, that's what I'm asking historically, since the cleanup started.
Since the cleanup started?
Yeah.
And since we did interim stabilization, it's probably on the order of thousands of gallons per year, not much more than that. And really, once we got through the interim stabilization process, that number would have gone down quite a bit. And so more recently with B-109, T-111, and T-101, I would guess there's probably between 2,000 and 3,000 per year, but that's really a guess, so I'd have to go back and look at the numbers again.
When cleanup efforts started, what was the initial target year? When cleanup efforts started, what was the initial target year for completion of the site cleanup and what is it now?
Well, I think they, at the time they started, it was thirty years. The current projection based on our two thousand and two, our two thousand twenty two life cycle cost report is twenty seventy eight. So um about fifty more years to execute the cleanup.
And then being on the Hanford Communities Board, my understanding is a new, I think vitrification process is glassifying. The waste and then transporting it. What's, what happens to the glass after it's created? Where's it stored? Where where does it get hauled to? Can you kind of touch on that process?
Yeah, so the for the low activity waste form that's being created, that will be created now with the low activity facility, direct feed low activity waste program. Those glass containers will stay on the Hanford site in the integrated disposal facility. That's their final resting place. For the high level waste facility that will finish construction and go into operations in the twenty thirties. We're we're gonna build an interim interim storage facility on the site. There's nowhere in the nation to take high level waste right now. So we're gonna build an interim stable interim facility um on the site that will take those containers. Until such time as there's a national repository and that's what they'll stay, they're stay, they'll stay till then.
It, what kind of containers will they be stored in?
Well, there's stainless steel containers, um the the low activity waste um containers are about seven feet high and about four feet in diameter. The high level waste containers are about two feet in diameter and about eight feet long. And so they'll be, they're they almost look like logs, but they're in stainless steel containers. So that's what the container looked like and that's what the form will be.
You know, to wrap it up, you said we won't hurt your feelings, so I'll be frank. I think you mentioned that Hanford is a success story and I think it's the furthest thing from a success story. Most polluted site in America, costless environment, environmental cleanup project ever. I mean, there's constant reports even from the New York Times of fraud, waste and abuse and failed projects that occur. And so with all that in mind, you've got the one Hanford and that's great, but what's DOE doing to kind of get serious, turn things around? And I mean, even as recently as in the last five to seven years or so, federal judges had to get involved. To force DOE to come up with new schedules and timelines. So with all that said. You know, this thing could go on forever and you mentioned this, uh that the Hanford site is a great economic backbone for the tri cities. So, you know, I wanted you to say, well, it's a great economic backbone, so let's drag this out for a long time and and take forever, but. We really need to get it cleaned up as 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 you know. So what's DOE doing to get serious about the cleanup and and get it completed on time?
I'll tell you, I'm serious about the cleanup. I know my team is serious. Our contractor partners are serious. And if you look at the trajectory or the transition that we've made just in the last few years. I agree that it's not a great story from the inception of the cleanup to today in a lot of respects. And a lot of it centers around the waste treatment plant. Um that was a project, a first of a kind, one of a kind project executed as design build. With an unproven technology. I I I'm a projects person in my background. That makes me sweat to think about that. And so what we've really tried to do since twenty twelve and the shift to direct feed low activity waste and as a site team. We we've driven to create the team dynamic and a common commitment to success. That will enable us to be successful. Now, when I talked about the fact that, uh you know, I want to be a fair and demanding customer. My contractors understand that there's an ethical standard that I expect them to operate to. If they don't, I'm gonna hold them accountable. And over the last several years, there's multiple examples of that with award fee scores and actions taken in a number of different venues. To make it clear what the expectation of of our DOE team is with respect to contract performance. And I would tell you, that hasn't made our relationship less good, it's made it stronger. Because we now are working together. There's a constant set of standards. There's a constant vision of what success looks like and we're working to drive that as hard as we can. When I talk about the trajectory, I I'm I'm looking at a site as the as the manager. Where I've got a set of trajectory that transcends my time, that puts the site on a trajectory for thirty, forty, fifty years in a positive way. So I think we've seen the turn in what we're accomplishing. We have a commitment from the department. We have a commitment from the administration. The funding is increasing. Our team is working very hard to continue to earn that trust and confidence to receive that those funds and continue to progress the mission. It's hard though. Um and even our relationships with the regulators have been strained in the past. I will say that our relationship with the state of Washington. Washington Department of Ecology, better than it's been since I've been in the job almost seven years. As the manager, at least the ORP side, and almost six years this February for both. So in my time, in our time, we have worked to put the site on a a more constructive and a positive trajectory. Our job is to continue to increase that trajectory going into the future and make sure that the challenge we we face, which we will, it's a complex site. We can face together and overcome and continue to progress the mission. That's as good as I can do in the time I have. And I think our team has really rallied around that.
Appreciate that. Uh those are all my questions. Thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you for your questions. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vance, thank you for your service to this great nation and the United States Navy. Talk to us about Rattlesnake Mountain. The public wants to know, do you see that ever getting opening up, opened up to the public?
Well, right now, we're in the process of working with the tribal communities, the the four tribes. To create a co stewardship model for the site, for for Rattlesnake, the Rattlesnake Unit of the National Park, National Monument. Because it's obviously sacred site for the tribes. We're working that initiative with Department of Interior, Energy, the tribes. And the tribes have set up a commission that will help them frame a a a place a framework around. What that co stewardship model would look like. I see that as a precondition to opening up. The Rattlesnake to more public access. The tribes want it open to public access because they want an opportunity to teach about. Their view of the Rattles, of Rattlesnake Mountain, their view of the natural resources that are there, their view of the protection of those resources. You know, we've, we, the the commission is intended to meet this month. We've had three leadership levels between the Department of Energy, Department of Interior, the Joint Proclamation, the two secretaries sign. I see this process as continuing and in not too distant future. Being able to talk more about it with the tribal nations, with our DOE and and frankly, the Department of Interior partners. In talking about what that future state looks like, um to make it more accessible. I think the language in twenty fifteen. Was um started a process that I don't think was ever going to be successful, given that the complexities of the sacred nature of the site. And the tribal relationships in the around this community, but I think the partnership and a co stewardship approach does create that opportunity and we're we're excited to continue to support that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. One last question, um just to bring back a couple of words you used here as far as um. Trust, you use the word, you know, mitigation and safety and a a lot of those components. What what would you tell just the general public who, back in two thousand seventeen, when the tunnel collapsed? Or like my colleague here mentioned the leaking and, you know, everybody, I think the general public sentiment is, well, they say it's safe, you know. But then, you know, how much do we trust the federal government? Are they telling us anything? What would you tell, well, how would you reassure those people that maybe have good reason to be skeptical about all of this?
Yeah, it's it's like I said, it's a challenging history in times. Um what I what I would tell you is. Every time that there's been a challenge on the site, we've done our very best to learn from that. When the tunnel collapsed, I I was a contractor at that point, so that was before, a little bit before my time. But during my time, we went out and did an evaluation of under other underground structures and we grouted them. We solved that problem. So that couldn't happen again. Because you at 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 Hanford, you either manage the site or the site manages you. And so I've chosen to manage the site. And so we're we're taking actions every day to progress that mission, learning from where we have shortfalls. Striving for excellence in every aspect and the communications aspect is really important to me. You know, the national security mission was sort of shrouded in secrecy from nineteen forty three until nineteen eighty nine. And kind of breaking down those barriers over time um has has been a cultural transition. I worked very hard to get out and tell our story in in venues across the the tri cities. Across the state, across the nation with the tribes. Tomorrow, I'm driving to Nesburse um to do a consultation on the host agreement. Because, you know, when when something doesn't go well on the site, I want to have been out there often enough talking about what we do. How we do it, creating that transparency. So and I'll tell you, when it's not going well, we announced the the leak in T one oh one. In the public comment period for the holistic agreement, we just completed with the state of Washington in April. That was not the best time to announce bad news about the Hanford site, but I was compelled by our philosophy. To be, go out and tell the, tell the story and why it's not an issue, what we're doing about it. And so I would, I would say, you know, if you think about. All the people that go out that site every single day and work, they wouldn't go out there unless they felt like they were safe. They wouldn't go out there unless they knew that the department and our contractor partners were committed to their safety every day. And my obligation and my commitment to the community is, um I'm gonna go out and tell you good news because that's easy. But if there's not so good news, I'm gonna be the first one to tell you. I'm gonna be out in public and talk about it and make sure you understand what we're doing about it. And what what why I think it's not a risk and and maintain that trust that I think is so important to. An a mission of this complexity and frankly of this nature.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Uh seeing go further mics, looks like you're let off the hook with only limited ones.
No, I really appreciate your time. Thank you all very much. And again, Rich Buell is our our, you know, our tour director. So we'd 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 love to have you out on the site anytime. Um I think it would change you if you haven't been out there before. So thank you very much for the.
I appreciate it and I will just note, you know, it's uh it's the reason I moved up here and I appreciate the time that I was out there. And the friendships and uh, you know, the relationships I've built over time.
Great, thanks.
With that, we'll move on to items. Yeah, we're still on seven, seven. Seven B, Ben Franklin Transit Presentation, uh gonna kick it off from Mr. Lincoln, then it looks like uh Mr. Slager is gonna.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh Mr. Slager is here. He's the Chief Planning and Development Officer for BFT and. Over the past seven years, he's focused on improving transit services, including the launch of BFT's micro transit service. Connect and I'll let him go ahead and introduce introduce the new CEO as well who's with us. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me tonight and giving us the time to give you a state of the transit presentation. Uh my name is Kevin Slager. I'm the Chief Planning and Development Officer. With Ben Franklin Transit. We also have Tom Droste here, who's our new Chief Executive Officer. He comes to us from Marta, which is the agency in Atlanta. So Tom has over twenty five years of transit experience. And uh his first five weeks here have been busy, to say the least, but he brings great experience. And with that, I can dive right in. So a brief overview of the agenda, I will make this brief. I, this is a abbreviated version of the presentation that we planned for tonight. So we'll have the introduction to our services, a description of our public transit benefit area, which is our service area. Some service changes and data metrics about our service over the past five years. Impacts of uh the the upcoming initiative twenty one seventeen vote in November. An overview of our annual service plan process and also an upcoming long range uh transit plan that we look to put together. We'll also give some time for questions and answers as well. So first, we want to start of an overview of our service. Uh our most obvious mode is our fixed route or what we, uh everyone knows as the bus routes. We provide service in the majority of the tri cities. We also have a one commuter route that goes out to Benton City and Prosser, the one seventy. We provide eighty eight uh paratransit service, which is serviced to eligible folks who are limited in. Uh accessibility, so we provide service uh beyond the federally mandated three fourths of a mile from our fixed route or bus network. We also have our van pool or what we're moving towards to call ride share. We've just talked about Hanford. Over half of our van pools go to the Hanford site, so. That's definitely a mode that's beneficial official to the community and those who work out there. We have a mode uh that's also called Connect. That's uh first last mile service, on demand service app based. It's considered uh what we call in the industry is micro transit. The um intention there is that service is provided to those who live beyond the fixed route and in uh less dense areas. And that allows then a mode to connect to our higher capacity fixed route services. So this is an overview of uh what we've done as an agency that in the past five years. I apologize, the slide looks cut off there. But in twenty seventeen, we had a large network redesign. Uh prior to that, our uh service operated from six AM to six PM. During the weekdays, uh we were one of the largest urban er areas in the US that had that limited time span. Again, in twenty seventeen, we did some uh redesigns to the network and expanded service to eight PM. In twenty twenty, we started uh the Connect Micro Transit Service that I mentioned. Prior to that, we contracted with the local taxi service who ended up going out of business. And uh we went out for a request for proposal to provide those services, uh which resulted in the Connect service. In twenty twenty one, uh we added our metro routes, our routes one and our routes three. Three actually serves uh this building right here. Both of those services uh run on fifteen minute headways or frequencies during peak service. In twenty twenty one, we added Sunday service. Uh in twenty twenty two, we uh or the board approved a youth ride free program. So anyone eighteen and under uh can utilize all modes on our service uh for free. Now, the reason we proposed this in the first place is it did make us eligible for some state funds, move ahead Washington funds. Which may be impacted by I twenty one seventeen if it is passed, so I'll get into that in a little bit. And then in terms of uh actual service changes to our bus routes, the past three to four years, we've had intensive changes in East Pasco. West Pasco and also our Queens Gate Transit Center just went online. So that's over there near the Queens Gate. The the Queens Gate shopping area in Richland. So I I wanted to go over some data metrics, some ridership and and show uh to the city council here that ridership is up. Obviously, there was a a large decline during the pandemic. At one point, we were only, uh we only saw about two thousand rides. On our fixed route. Um we're up to almost twelve thousand as we speak. Last week, we had a day of over twelve thousand rides. But since uh so pre COVID, we are about twelve percent over what what we did prior to COVID. So even though that we saw a drop off, uh these services that we've implemented over the past couple of years have been fruitful. We have been seeing ridership increase. And I anticipate this October to be one of the highest ridership months we've seen in decades. And uh we, again, we're anticipating about three hundred thousand boardings on our bus just in the one month of October. So I mentioned the youth ride free uh program. We started that in June of twenty twenty two. Prior to that, youth ridership made up about thirty percent of our boardings. Putting this program into place, we've seen uh ridership increase, not only because of youth ride free, but that has been one of the main drivers. As as it stands now, about thirty five to forty percent of our ridership are those who are eighteen and under. We see higher levels here in Pasco. We have um a lot of school age kids trying to get to and from school. And in a lot of those areas, the yellow bus isn't provided, so uh many of our middle school and high school children and and teens. Use the transit as a way to access school, uh not only during the school hours, but if they have zero hour, they can use transit. And also if they want to take part in any extracurricular activities after school, they can also utilize transit as well. So I mentioned I twenty one seventeen. I'm sure the council is aware, this is an initiative that's on the ballot in November. It would repeal the Climate Commitment Act. And the impact it would have on our agency would be a reduction in about three point five million dollars in transit support grants, which we. Received annually, another one point nine million in special needs funding, which helps support our dialer ride program. And then an additional two twenty two point six million in capital capital project funds. Now, that's over the course of the entire uh grant, uh which is about sixteen years. So that wouldn't be one year, but there would be some projects affected if this initiative were to pass. And with that, I wanted to highlight our twenty twenty five annual service plan process. So something I've really focused on over the past couple of years is getting a methodical process. Or implementing a methodical process to our service planning process where we uh garner feedback from both the public and internal. To make sure that the recommendations we're putting forward to our our board are thought through and uh within our budget limitations. So right now, we're in the process of going out to the public to seek input. Our recommendations we'll be making uh for June of twenty twenty five. So what's relevant to the city of Pasco is changes we'll be making to our route two two five uh potentially. We know that Sage View High School is uh gonna open up in the fall of twenty twenty five. So we're working on ways to uh provide service to that facility. We've also already worked with Pasco School District to make sure there's the infrastructure there to stop. If any of the routes we do end up um adjusting to serve that area uh go into place uh in. Uh, if any of the routes we do end up um, adjusting to serve that area uh, go into place uh, in June. This will allow us a few months to provide that service prior to opening up the opening of, of Sageview. So. Uh, I encourage everyone uh, to come to our open house tomorrow. It's at the Mid-Columbia Library at the downtown branch right here on Fourteenth. We'll be going over our annual service plan, uh, and then bringing that to the board for approval hopefully in December of this year. So last but not least, uh, we are um, engaging in a long-range tran- transit plan process. So. Believe it or not, uh, our agency was started in nineteen-eighty-one and we've never had a long-range plan. We are required to have a six-year transit development plan, but we want to develop a plan that's more synced up with both the city and county's comp plans. And their transit improvement uh, plan. So uh, we're in the data and collection and uh, analysis phase right now. And just starting off that public information and outreach phase, uh, but really it's our intent to coordinate with the cities, with the counties. Make sure that we're growing in a way that's conducive uh, to how uh, again, the jurisdictions we serve are growing as well. So from there, we'll go to a needs and gaps assessment, uh, really synthesize the data, the, the, the public outreach we've had and identify the gaps. And then uh, this will culminate in a long-range plan approval, which we hope to the, to bring to the board in about uh, a year. So before we get into questions, I did wanna give an update on some Pasco-specific projects. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, B F T received funds for a downtown Pasco Transit Hub, also a West Pasco Transit's hub. So COVID uh, really delayed that process, but I can say we're currently in the siding phase for West Pasco. We've worked with the city, P F D, to, to see if there's an area for us uh, in their project. Um, but we, we are leaving um, our options open. We're looking at uh, different areas in West Pasco where a future transit hub could go. Uh, we do know this is the fastest-growing part of the tri-city, so we're trying to be proactive uh, and, and get some infrastructure in those areas. Uh, we also um, own some land, uh, the bank building that's just north of the Pasco School District. We initially planned this to be a downtown tri- transit hub. We have been um, uh, retweaking or retooling. That idea considering the cost it would take to develop that piece of land uh, for a transit-intensive uh, use. Uh, so we have been working with the state to potentially ship those funds to the Twenty-Second Avenue Transit Center. Which will need to be re- renovated uh, in, in the coming uh, two to five years. So that is past its federal um, uh, useful life. I, I believe we updated that facility in uh, the late eighties. And so again, we transferred those funds. We still own tha- that land, the bank building that's just north of uh, uh, Pasco School District um, on Eleventh and Clark. Uh, but we are gonna work with the board to revision what uh, facility uh, could, could go in place of, of the transit center. So. Uh, we've thrown around the ideas of a customer service center or something to that effect. But again, this is something that will work with our board and the city of Pasco to figure out what the best use for that facility is. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we've got Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Mayor, I just wanna commend Mr. Slager to you. Um, he's had basically three bosses over the last several months, including interim, interim C E O. And um, the predecessor before that, and he has really been the glue in a lot of ways that's held the organization together. So thank you so much for all your work there. If you would, um, would you s- talk to us about what percentage of total boardings or ridership are here in? I wanna say Franklin County, but it's really just the city of Pasco compared with the entire um, system.
Yeah, last we did an analysis was, which was about two, two months ago. It was about thirty-five percent. So, you know, um, about. The population-wise, Pasco's probably uh, going to be one of the, the largest jurisdictions, but it is about thirty-five percent. And in terms of tax collection, uh, as you mentioned, in most of Benton County, we, we cover not only the city jur- uh, city limits. But also beyond that in the county lands. In Franklin County, it is basically everything within city of Pasco city limits. And then if there's any county donut holes, that is included per R C W rule. Um, but yes, to answer your question, about thirty-five percent of boardings happen within Pasco.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, um, if I recall correctly, B F T currently collects zero, zero-point-six percent sales tax. Is that right?
Six tenths of a percent, yep.
Sorry?
Six tenths of a percent, yes.
And uh, is it totaled fifty-three million or so in revenue? How much on an annual basis is B F T contributing to road construction projects or improvement projects throughout tri-cities and obviously specifically Pasco?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I can speak to our amenities project, which uh, we've, to this point, we started that in twenty-eighteen. So that was a um, uh, initiative to basically improve our bus stops, make them more accessible. And uh, we've sin- since the start of that project, spent about five million dollars in improving uh, the bus stops in those areas. And when we go into an area and improve a bus stop, we improve everything around it, right? Or if we see that there's a project that um, you know, impacts a bus stop that we would like to uh, improve. Then we contribute funds in that way as well. So that's really the only way that we've contributed directly to some of the, the city's. Um, uh, roadwork, so to speak, or construction projects. But uh, we're trying to, or, or we make it a point to be part of those discussions during the, the design phase and see how we can contribute. Um, that makes sense for us, right? So.
You mentioned this October, you're predicting to be one of the biggest ridership months in the last decade. What, is there a specific reason for that?
I, I think, you know, we've added service, um, uh, quite a bit of service, youth ride-free. And then. I, I think, you know, we've done a great job of marketing, really, in the past year. We, we brought on a new marketing team. So I'd like to say, I'd like to think that that's had a huge impact, but um, that's, that's definitely uh, youth ride-free. Uh, additional service and, and just getting the word out about uh, Ben Franklin Transit has, has definitely contributed. So.
Um, and then what percent of ridership would you say is uh, youth-aged kids, you know, in middle school or high school, like you mentioned?
Yeah, so uh, about uh, zero to eighteen, really. So um, about thirty-five to forty percent as it is right now, right? Uh, so uh, during these higher ridership months. So we've seen that increase from about one-third of ridership with youth ride-frees.
And does that mean the kids, like you mentioned, that they're doing zero hour or after-school activities, where the school bus system may not work for their schedule?
Yeah, so we, we actually uh, did some analysis, some, some G I S analysis to figure out, you know, where people are boarding. Uh, are they within the school walk zones, where things are happening? We found that eighty-nine percent of boardings. Uh, both uh, in Pasco and we also use Richland as an example. Eighty-nine percent of boardings are happening uh, within those walk zones, so where the yellow bus isn't provided. And then fifty-three percent of those boardings are happening outside of the hours where that, that yellow bus service is provided. So. Yes, there may be a little redundancy there in those services, but it's, it's, it's small uh, of, in, in our opinion and based on our analysis we've done.
Okay. Uh, and then how many buses does Ben Franklin Transit operate? And I see. In my just driving, I see the van pools generally look pretty full. Dial-a-rides are generally, generally pretty full. And it seems like outside of school pickup and drop-off uh, times of day, where I've seen, it seemed like a hundred kids get off a bus. Seems like they're generally empty-looking. I know at uh, at different B F T board meetings, there's been a lot of contention over that. Ridership's obviously gone up, but. Is it, is the most ridership happening at the beginning of the day and the end of the day typically?
Yeah, in, in like anywhere, I, I like to liken ridership to traffic really in, in that, that peak demand, right? And if you look at it, uh, a ridership demand graph on a weekday, uh, you have two noticeable AM and P M peaks. So exactly what you're saying, uh, um, there, there definitely is shifts in demand. In terms of buses, our, our vehicles operated max service is fifty. So. Uh, the most buses we have out on the road at any given time is uh, fifty buses and that's spread over a six-hundred. Uh, square-mile service area. Granted, the majority of that is the Hamford site, so it's more like about two-hundred uh, square miles uh, that we provide our service in.
Um, and then uh, folks with physical limitations or disabilities that have been wheelchair-bound, are there any buses that they're able to ride or is it just dial-a-ride? And is there a significant cost increase for using dial-a-ride over just regular transit?
Yes, the dial-a-ride mode costs significantly more. Uh, the, these folks that use it have, have a reason to use it, right? And they're eligible. Uh, our goal and our mission as an agency is to make the fixed route as accessible as possible. So those folks that may need the paratransit uh, would prefer to use the fixed route, right? Because something uh, that's unique about paratransit is it's a twenty-four-hour uh, reservation. Uh, so if they need a same-day ride, uh, you know, there's times where we can provide that. But at the same time, the fixed route or our connect mode uh, gives them a little bit more freedom. So. Um, to your point, I think uh, the more accessible we can make our system, the more we can drive people to that less costly mode. And uh, not only is it less costly, it gives people more freedom. So.
Um, and then last question, um, I'm sure you were a couple of years ago, a s- uh, Pasco School District bus driver was unfortunately stabbed to death at Longfellow. Um, and if I remember reading currently in the Herald, that led the school district to kind of review their safety procedures. Um, for onboarding buses when bus drivers open doors and such, wh- what is, has B F T used that incident to kind of review their safety procedures or? Have you guys had that conversation?
Yes, and uh, yeah, that's been the impetus for, for, not that we didn't have safety procedures prior, but it's definitely something that's been a focus. I know uh, Mr. Droste, he's, that's something he's talked about, safety, you know, he has experienced at larger agencies where um. You know, this is an everyday thing for them and, and we uh, are, that, that's our plan is to address that and, and um. Bolster those policies and procedures. I don't have any specific examples for you now. Um, but I, I guess I could point to um, all of our vehicles now are, are bus. Our fixed route vehicles do have the protective barrier installed, which was something that wasn't in place prior to that incident. So. That's a tangible thing that we've done that, that you can point to.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, really appreciate your time and the information.
Yep, thank you.
With that, we'll move on back to item seven C, which is verbal reports for councils. Um, Mr. Harpster.
Uh, all I did was attend River Fest on Saturday, uh, which was sponsored in part by the city of Pasco. And I just opportunity to learn about our rivers and hydropower and um, various other forms of power. Um, a lot of our partners are, were out there, um, Franklin P U D, um, Port Pasco, Senator Binkie was there as well. And uh, was um, seemed to be more well-attended than it was last year. So, thanks.
Excellent. Always love seeing our community engaged. Um, seeing no further lights, let's move on to item eight, hearings and council action on ordinances relu- and resolutions relating thereto. There is none listed. Or there are none listed. Um, item nine, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Got several action items here. So we're gonna start with nine A, which is resolutions number four-five-zero-two, four-five-zero-three, four-five-zero-four. Which are change orders number fifty-three through fifty-six for professional services agreement amendment number three. With W S P USA Inc. and professional services supplemental agreement number seven with J U B Engineers Inc. For the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Uh, we got Miss Sarah, but it looks like you're kicking it off to our friend.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. For this item, we will provide a quick overview of the three motions and. Actions requested from you. Um, and for that, Michael Oldman, our project engineer, will uh, guide us through the presentation.
Mayor and council, thank you for having me back again. Talk about Lewis Street Overpass. So council, as you are aware, um, having talked to you uh, a few different times, um, always start with a schedule, just kind of where we were and where we're at today. So our groundbreaking was way back in June of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, this was originally set as a four-hundred-working-day contract. Um, as you are aware, from the last presentation about two months ago. Uh, that has roughly doubled. So it's some very close to an eight-hundred-working-day contract. Um, the bridge opened April twenty-sixth earlier this year. Um, so I hope everybody's had a chance to use it. Uh, the substantial completion date on the project and substantial completion is the point at which uh, the city has a full operational use of that. So one of the things right now holding that up is like the staircase and there's obviously some paving happening on uh, kind of the lower Lewis area. So um, the paving is planned for just a couple of weeks away. Um, so you see that turning into a, a road back again. And then um, the staircases are out uh, near the uh, mid-end of November. And so with those being completed, so. Uh, at that point, then uh, we'll work through punch lists and things like that with the contractor. The underpass demolition is something um, that we are also actively pursuing. Uh, we are, that's anticipated to be in the second quarter of twenty-twenty-five. That is pending funding and that's something that uh, after the last meeting, um, we had uh, submitted an application for some funding. Through one of the programs that has potential for this. Uh, we have not heard back on that yet, but that's something that we are um, actively working for. Um, and there's a couple of funding conferences that uh, Maria and I uh, will be attending in the next um, roughly month here. Uh, to work with some funders to seek funding to get that paid for. So as you're all aware, there's been quite a few challenges on Lewis Street Overpass. Uh, B N S F has undoubtedly been the biggest challenge that we have faced on this project. Um, recently, one of the uh, big things that we've encountered is undisclosed requirements. Um, something that is unique to the railroad where there's not a lea- a lot of repercussions with them. Uh, there were some unique material testing that was required on this, uh, specifically testing for hydrocarbons and it, material that was being imported to site. Basically, they wanna know that you're not bringing contaminated material in. Those tests were not something previously disclosed by them. Um, and they take quite a while to complete those. They're about a week for each test. Um, and we had to do several rounds of them for the railroad. Another thing that we've struggled with, with the railroad is the review timelines. Uh, per the standard specifications that we hand out to the contractor that they bid on and governs the overall contract. Uh, there's specific timelines that the city has to respond on things, but there's certain submittals that we have to get B N S F approval from. B N S F essentially has no risk in these, and when they miss the timeline, the city misses the timeline because we can't approve things on their property without their concurrence. Um, and the overpass agreement that we have in place, uh, which believe, at least many of you have seen before. Uh, shifts essentially all that risk to the city. So that's something that we continue to um, engage with them regularly, but it's risk that is uh. Inherent in working in the railroad right away. So Lewis Street Overpass change orders. Uh, as you're aware, there are fifty-two change orders that have previously been approved on the product, project. That totals about six-point-five million dollars. The change orders that I come to, uh, come to you today with are fifty-three through fifty-six, and those total about three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh, at this time, there's no other change orders that are known on the project um, that we have identified. The change orders that we are bringing to today, uh, the first one is change order fifty-three. Um, it's for some valley gutters. They're on Main Street, uh, just to the east of uh, the overpass structure. Uh, there's a low point in the roadway that's holding a pretty significant amount of runoff. Um, there was no storm drainage identified for that area. Um, and it's something that after some significant rainstorms, uh, there was upwards of a foot of water in, on one side of the road. And so we're addressing that with adding some valley gutter. Uh, and we believe that's the most cost-effective solution to mitigate that issue. Change order fifty-four um, is for about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, as you may recall, during the last presentation, I had mentioned that there was one more delay change order coming. Well, with a cost magnitude of around two-hundred-and-twenty-five doll- two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that is what this is. It also provides the contractor with twenty-four working days. Those are dr- the, uh, excuse me, directly relatable to the uh, B N S F issues that I'd mentioned with some of the review timelines. Um, the, and the material testing that was not previously disclosed. So at this point in the contract, um, everything that the contractor does is essentially on the critical path. And so if there's delays by the railroad, the contractor uh, per these specifications is entitled to additional time. And that time has a value to it as well. Um, and so that's what that change order represents. Change order fifty-five is for some additional water line replacement on First Avenue. Uh, after the uh, contractor began doing some work on First Avenue, discovered that the water line was shallower than anticipated. And does not meet cover requirements. Uh, water lines are, need to have four feet of cover over top of them. We also found this area has lead joints in it, and those lead joints are highly likely to fail during the vibratory rolling that is done with the pa- with the placement of asphalt. Um, so this particular change order we feel is in the best interest to execute this because if that does not happen now. Uh, when the paving happens, there's a good chance, or a very good chance that this will be an emergency change order. Um, with all the work having to be done and also tearing up the asphalt. Um with all the work having to be done and also tearing up the asphalt that we just placed. And change order fifty-six uh is for some resur surveying that was done on the project. Um and regrading to uh manage stormwater more efficiently than than originally planned on. There's also two consultant contract extensions uh in front of you for vote tonight, so the first one of those is for W S P. W S P is the construction management firm that is managing Lewis Street overpass on behalf of the city. Uh the original contract for that, as you can see, was about one point eight million dollars, uh there was a supplement one for about fifty thousand dollars. Uh those during covid, W S P um did bail the city out with that, provided some services that. Uh the Washington State Department of Transportation typically provides, but during covid, they cut those services to outside agencies, so W S P had staff available to do that. Uh and the um help the project out with that. Supplement number two was significant at nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, uh that extended um their contract simply because of the contract duration. Uh moving from four hundred days to close to eight hundred days. So as you can see, the current contract sits at about two point eight million dollars, uh supplement three is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh provide services essentially through the end of the year, possibly into the beginning of next year. Uh would take the total contract value to just under three million dollars. The other uh consultant contract ex- extension in front of you is for J U B engineers, uh and essentially is construction support. Um so the contract, uh J U B obviously has a long history with the job, they did the design for it. Um what I show in front of you, supplements three through seven are related specifically to the construction of the project, so. Uh supplement number three was the original ninety-seven thousand dollars, submit a review on call engineering services. Uh they are the engineers of record on the project, so there's certain structural uh submittals and things like that that we really do, the city really does need. Uh their review and concurrence on. Uh there's been additional supplements um that the total proposed contract with a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar request from J U B engineers. Would take the total cost to six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on this. Uh the breakout of supplement number seven, which is in front of you guys today, uh there's about a hundred and five thousand dollars related to construction support services, so. Um that may be seminal reviews or various aspects uh are advised from the contractor, things like that. And there's also sixty thousand dollars um estimated for about some the bridge expansion joints. Um we're doing some monitoring on them, there's been some cracking that showed up and um so we're working with them to follow that evaluated and um. Provide a solution for that. So considering all that, counsel, do you have any questions that I can answer?
Thank you for that presentation, Mister Harpster.
Yep, my one and only question is, I I get change orders are part of life, I'm good with that, but. A hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for construction support for J U B seems extremely excessive and. The math that I do is if you take the average civil engineer billing at a hundred and seventy-five an hour, that's nine hundred and forty-two hours of work. For a project that's almost done, so can can you explain why they're asking for such a substantial increase? Well, first off, I would point out that any dollars that are in their contract, it's not a lump sum agreement or anything like that, so it's on a time and material basis. So if there are uh if everything is perfect from here on out, they may not spend much or, you know, any of that money. But um having worked with them on this, uh we want to get a contract in place that has adequate funds for them. To address any any issues that we may have to the end of the project and not come back to council again, so the hours on that um. Primarily could be related to uh a lot of the uh remaining water line work, things like that, their contract is is near um. Near zero dollars remaining on that, sixty thousand of that is uh specific to monitoring the expansion joints on the bridge. Uh the remaining of that is about a hundred thousand dollars, and so. As we close out the project, there's support from them for just various submittals and things like that, that they'll have people evaluating um and other. Kind of other related tasks with that.
Okay, fair enough, I'll just state that I really don't think there's that uh nine hundred and forty-two hours worth of work is. Uh acceptable to prove.
Thank you, Mister Peralos.
Haven't talked that at all today, um thank you, Mayor, uh no, I appreciate the the presentation. And I I do agree uh with Councilmember Harpster, um but I I'm glad to see that it's a T and M. And hopefully they can get their work done, but I think it's um strategically needed, given the fact that you did talk about some of that cracking and stuff like that, so. Um I I would think there'd be some type of special testing and investigation with those, so that could prove to be costly, but. Um I guess my my only question for you would be, why are we essentially just kind of being pulled from our nose by B N S F? Um is there anyone that we can talk to that's above them? You know, is it the Department of Transportation? Do we gotta get Mayor Pete in here, the original Mayor Pete? And to address him or because it just seems like this is what's the biggest items on here for change orders is them. Um I mean, there has to be some recourse, I mean, we can't just be giving money away for this stuff and being held up by them. So what so what can, I mean, is there an option for that? To have a meeting with B N S F and the people who oversee them?
I have a I have a weekly meeting with them coordinating have for a significant amount of time on this project. Um now whether or not there's a political route um to go up and over to the top of B N S F. Um perhaps, um but typically, uh unfortunately on these types of projects, I mean, the the overpass agreement. That is signed, that is required to sign by the city to do the work in there, cause. They don't care if you build a bridge over their property, right? You know, so that's at least that's how they approach it. Um if you want to build on their property, here's the terms and conditions in their overpass agreement. And um I've I've spent more time in that document than than I care to admit, and. It really does shift the liability to the agencies, um it's a, you know, from an agency perspective. Um there's just not a lot of options, if you want to build a bridge, like here are the terms and conditions. Now, could the city, again, I guess to answer your question specifically, is there anybody higher and higher that we could address this with? Not not that I'm aware of, I mean, we work with the the manager for public projects for uh the. Northwest and the mountain region, as they call it, on these, and so. Um I'm sure he has a manager somewhere, I don't know who it is, we've never been able to get a meeting with them, um even requesting some of those, so it's. You know, here's who you're gonna work with and um you know, ultimately, it's the the agreement that we have in place that I'm kind of bound by. You know, so we don't, we don't take these just, you know, when BN says jump, it's not just how high, I mean, it's. You know, we do fight back on these things, but for the testing requirements, um there really were a huge impact here. That's something where we have weekly meetings with them so that these things don't catch us off guard. And this one, as we were ready to start the work, they came back and said, we need this test. So we went and did that test for them, it takes five days to do it. Had to ship that out, I mean, we had somebody pick it up, ma- material, drive it to a lab that same day, just to. You know, not delay the contractor, finish that, BN then came back, said, okay, your test passed, we need you to do it nine more times. And so same thing, we've been having these me- you know, weekly meetings with them, trying to avoid these issues. Um but ultimately, it, you know, it falls back on on the city. With the agreement where they say, we have no liability in this, we've got no costs that we're contributing to the project, it's your project, and we'll we'll try and do our best.
So there's really no recourse to come back to the table and reevaluate that agreement then? And I mean, we don't, doesn't we don't have an endless pot of money and we're already budget on this thing. I mean, I I would think, I mean, I'd be in favor of us supporting, go to the political route. And figure out meetings with whoever is above those people, I mean, it just gets to a point where we have to stand up for ourselves. And uh especially if something um all that other require testing and the project delays, we have to do something, I mean. You'll, we'll find out later, we'll talk about later tonight with our budget, but I mean, we don't got endless supply money, and I I appreciate the staff. Uh looking for funding, but I mean eventually, you know, this is this is honestly just becoming a real big joke at this point. And uh it I just think we need to do something rather than keep on, you know, every couple of months come with these change orders and. We have to approve it because we want this, you know, overpass to be done and we can move on, but um I'd be in favor of that, but I'll I'll address it offline, thank you.
Yeah, and I would obviously defer to, you know, legal if there's uh legal recourse on things like that, but. Um just want you to let let you know that, I mean, this this project team takes the budget on this very seriously. And advocates for the city um incredibly hard throughout this project.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I appreciate uh your comments and and I know you're working hard beyond the scenes, and I I've been told that, so I really appreciate that, that doesn't go unnoticed, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh seeing no further mics on Mister Milney, can you help me out here with a couple of motions, one at a time, I guess?
Not a problem, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number forty-five oh two, authorizing the city manager to execute change orders numbers fifty-three. Through fifty-six to the construction contract with Cascade Bridge LLC for the Lewis Street overpass project.
We've got a motion and a second, can we get a roll, um sorry, not a roll call, uh all in favor, say aye? Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
No.
Okay, so we've got the, we've got four and yeah, two, the two dissenters would be Harpster Peralos with a forty-two vote. So that passes. With that, Mister Milney, number two.
All right, I move to approve resolution number forty-five oh three, authorizing the city manager to execute. Supplement number seven to the professional services agreement with J U dep- J U B Engineers Incorporated for the Lewis Street overpass project.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Got one nay from Mister Harpster, so that passes five to one. Our third motion, Mister Milney.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number four- forty-five oh four, authorizing the city manager to execute. Amendment number three to the professional services agreement with W S P USA Incorporated for the Lewis Street overpass project.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? This uh got Mister Harpster, Mister Peralos, so it's gonna pass again forty-two. With that, we're gonna move on to, thank you, appreciate it, and as Mister Peralos said, I do wanna uh s- you know, signal that. The work that staff does on this is does not go unnoticed, uh albeit we're, you know, in such a. Frustrating position with the B N S F, we'll say, um so we appreciate it, appreciate your advocacy for our community. Um with that move, we will move on to items, uh item number B, which is ordinances number four, seven, three, zero and four, seven, three, one. The twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan amendment docket by Mister Gonzalez.
Yes, uh good evening, uh Mayor, members of council, this has been a set of items that you've seen uh uh several times of the past couple of months. Uh the comp plan is a very important document for the city, it's a guiding uh set of strategies that we use to help uh with our growth management strategies over a twenty-year timeframe. Um this uh item is associated with the annual amendment process, it's allowed once per year by state law unless there's uh. An emergency associated with um needing a second amendment. And um I'll go really quickly over the criteria, there's two sets of criteria uh for an amendment to be considered um. Uh as part of an amendment process, uh should be substantially benefit to the uh public health, safety and welfare. Um aligned with the uh growth uh growth management act requirements, that's the thirty-six seventy-eight R C W. And uh it could uh be a response to correcting a mapping error or address deficiency in the comprehensive plan itself. Um additional factors um on this screen, um uh that illustrate that the proposed amendment must consider its impact on the physical environment. The open space, natural future, et cetera, uh compatibility with adjacent land uses. Uh address the adequacy of community facilities, the demand for a proposed uh land use, current and projected density. And uh overall alignment with the uh comprehensive plan itself, and so staff has attached to this report. Uh provided council with our evaluation on those criteria and factors. And um uh on the next slide, uh get into the first item, which is CPA two zero two two zero zero three. Uh this is an item that consists of about hundred ninety-seven acres, uh it's a land use amendment from industrial to mixed residential, commercial. Uh the site is located along East A Street between Oregon Avenue and South Road forty. Uh to the north is existing residential with some commercial uses. Uh the city of Pasco A Street Soccer Complex uh is located uh to the west. Uh with existing industrial uses and facilities located to the immediate east, uh there is proposed industrial development south. Uh southeast of the site as well. Um an environmental impact statement was produced as part of this amendment that identified uh probable adverse impacts along with. Uh mitigations themselves, uh generally, the impacts are primarily related just to the substantial increase of uh residential. Uh dwellings and housing uh within proximity to industrial uses. Um and some of the uh mitigations involve trying to accommodate and and mitigate those um those potential impacts. I I do want to reiterate that both this and the second item are non-project actions, there's no project associated with them. So the reviews conducted both at the environmental level, that's the C P A or the E I S or the staff evaluation attached. Uh to the report are done purely on a land use uh on a land use level. So this is the first item, and um there is a ordinance attached for each of these. Uh these are an abbreviated ordinance, the full language is attached to the staff report, but um. Uh the the termination by council would be to either uh approve this ordinance or to deny um uh to deny the amendment. Um any questions on this item before I move on to the second one?
I do have a quick question. To the extent that this impacts uh the percentage of our industrial land. I mean, how do you foresee um I guess being able to recover that from future zoning regulations as we as the city grows?
Uh yeah, when we uh adopted our last comprehensive plan, we kind of dealt with um or we benefited from having significant amount of vacant large industrial land. Um but there's been quite a bit of successful development um and attraction of uh industrial users to uh the city of Pasco over the last several years. That have really taken up a quite a bit of those vacant lands, and so um we do anticipate just with early discussions with um. The Port Pasco and other industrial users that uh there may be a need to seek other industrial areas for expansion, which would for us would include. Uh expanding the urban growth area to accommodate industrial growth. I think one of the challenges with this site in particular, even if it were left industrial, that is is that there's still a residential development both to the north. And to the east, and so there would still be a challenge with uh uh uh. It just accommodating ex- existing industrial, the existing zoning designation for industrial. Uh given that there is a residential to the north and to the east, and so whoever essentially um. Uh uh submitted for a project would have to account for the fact that the existing conditions include nearby residential. So it's it's a challenging site for sure, regardless of what land use ends up being um developed there.
Thank you, uh any additional on Mister Harpster?
Yeah, I'll just to your point, Mayor, if I remember correctly from the staff report, this site represents three percent of all land that's uh designated as industrial in the city.
I see no further mics, you can move along.
Yep, and so the uh second item associated with the docket is CPA two zero two three zero zero one. And uh this is a request to amend uh just under three acres from low density residential to medium density residential. Uh the site is located on the southwest uh intersection of uh Argent and Road one hundred. Uh this are right, the site is surrounded by uh various residential housing um on all sides, um there is a church located across the street. Um and it might be hard to see on this map, but it's it's trying to point to, um you can see the yellow. Uh site um arrow and it tried to depict where the site's actually located, just to the south of of uh one eighty-two in the Broadmore area. So um these are the two amendments associated with the twenty twenty-three docket. Um as required by state law, they must be uh must be a uh uh decision voted on them kind of concurrently, so considering both. At the same time, um there is uh ordinance attached for council consideration. I'm happy to answer your questions on the second item or in general about the uh twenty twenty-three docket as well. Um uh quickly, just uh uh with respects to what happens after tonight's decisions, uh the uh. Approval or nonapproval will be distributed to the Washington State Department of Commerce as required by law. And then um will be updates to the future line use map to reflect the um uh any changes made this evening, so uh thank you, happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, do we have any questions before we move to an ordinance, seeing no, or I'm not an ordinance, a motion?
So just to clarify, are we gonna have discussion or are we going straight to motions?
We certainly can have discussion if we'd like. If you've got thoughts, let's let's hear it, Mister Milney.
Okay, um on the second motion, as far as the one on the Road one hundred and Argent, I just wanted to. Make it well known that the planning commission did deny it, I know they changed it from commercial to um medium residential. I understand that there is a lot of people, we do have two developments that are happening in West Pasco by the. As far as the different townhouses coming in, uh pro made homes, I mean, we're talking over a thousand fifteen hundred townhouses. So on this particular issue, I believe that uh. So, on this particular issue, I believe that, uh, it is not in our best interest with traffic. We're having prob- problems with traffic. And, uh, yeah, I would ask the council to deny on motion two as far as for changing the land use. Um, I just can't imagine so many townhouses coming in, which they are happening. And then now we're wanting to put heavy infill in different parts of Pasco and the people that are there bought those homes so they could have peace and quiet and not to have heavy infill. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Milney. Mister Harpster.
Uh, surprise, I'm gonna take the exact opposite position. Uh, and I'll just mention that the Growth Management Act requires municipalities to prioritize infill projects, uh, such as this one, although as, uh, Mister Gonzalez mentioned, it's not a project yet. Um, there is a desperate need for housing. And if you compare the number of development applications that are submitted to the city with the number of housing units that our comprehensive plan calls for within twenty years, we're falling very well short of that. And so little tiny two-acre projects like this help out a little bit. Um, again, the, the planning commission's recommendation was denial when it was for a designation that didn't necessarily make sense in that area. Um, in that, can change it. And I think that, um, medium density definitely makes more sense than, um, the, uh, the mixed residential commercial that was proposed before. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on either of these actions? Okay, seeing none, let's, let's, uh, make the motion. Oh, Mister Peralas.
I'll just make it quick, yeah. Uh, I would just say that I, I, I agree with Councilmember Milney. You know, I've talked with a lot of individuals who live in those areas, especially, and I've, I've been kind of vocal about that kind of south Pasco area. People moved down there for a reason, or they bought in property there for a reason. I think infill's great, but I think we need to start being selective about where, what type of development we see. Um, you know, we, again, it's countless, but like every other month, there's a group of individuals who come in here when they find out someone's doing infill development, um, you know, fourteen, fifteen units next to, you know, a couple of acre parcels. It's just, it's just it, we gotta start being more selective and we wanna see that growth more in the west area, Broadmore area. That's where we should gravitate, uh, uh, and push that type of development, not, you know, right next to people's homes. You know, I saw, um, the Alvarado one. This thing was standing room only. So I think we need to listen to the community from time to time, but, you know, whatever, uh, what, however this body chooses, um, you know, that's, it's not gonna hurt my feelings, but I just wanted to make sure that to the people out there, you know, they are being heard, um, by people on the council in regards to how they wanna see their community develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, uh, Mister Milney, can you give us our first motion?
Okay, motion number one is I move to adopt ordinance number four-seven-three-zero, adopting the new heritage future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant of the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty-six point seven zero A dot R C W and further authorized publication by summary only.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Nay. Passes five to one. With that, Mister Milney.
Do I have to read the first one or can I read the one?
You're making the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to number two. I move to deny the Road one hundred in Argent land use amendment to the comprehensive plan of the city of Pasco pursuant of the Growth Management Act, chapter thirty-six point seven zero A dot R C W.
Second.
Discussion.
Um, got a motion in a second. Mister Harpster's asked for discussion. Any issues with that, Mister? Alright.
So with the negative motion, then a yes vote is to deny and a no is to, okay. Okay. Because it was a, 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 a negative motion, right? If we vote yes on this, it's to deny. Just wanted to confirm.
Any further discussion on this? Oh, jeez, I just turned my mic off. All those in favor with the motion to deny the action, say aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Nay. Sounds like the emotion to deny passes on a four to do, two vote with Mister Harpster and Serrano being the nose. The other four were yeas. I don't wanna have to look around. Uh, let's move on to item C. That's ordinance number four-seven-three-two, Peak Town Place rezoned from C one to R three. Going back to Mister Gonzalez.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Mayor and members of council, on May eighth, uh, the Pasco Hearing Examiner conducted a public hearing uh, related to the, uh, rezon petition located on the northwest corner of Road sixty-eight and West Court Street. Uh, the site consists of, uh, about six point six acres with a proposed R three medium-density zoning. Uh, the site is currently zoned C one retail business. Um, the, uh, existing land use accommodates both residential and, uh, commercial zoning. And the examiner had recommended an approval of the rezon petition in accordance with the rezon criteria outlined in, uh, the previous slide, uh, which is in PMC twenty-five-two-ten-zero-three-zero. Um, I, I do wanna make a, a slight note that, uh, there is a file number, um, in the packet that was issued to council. That's incorrect. The correct file number for this petition is Z two-zero-two-four hyphen zero-zero-two. Um, as noted in the hearing examiner recommendation, no member of the public provided comments or submitted, uh, testimony uh, on the rezon. And, uh, based on the findings, the examiner recommends approval of the rezon and a ordinance is attached for, uh, council consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez. Uh, Mister Ferguson.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this is, uh, just wanna go through the script that we normally do for rezones. So this is a quasi judicial hearing or proceeding to render a final decision on materials that are presented. It is defined as a proceeding which, uh, the council defines legal rights, duties, privileges of specific parties in a hearing proceeding or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies and the hearing must be fair in three respects, form, substance and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follow, as follows. A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally. C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing of the facts. D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And finally, E, any other contact which, or excuse me, any other conflict, uh, which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known. Seeing none, uh, oh, dude.
I, I did wanna make a, a statement on, uh,
Sure.
Part D there as far as the Alvarado, um, should I make it an hour or?
We'll get to that one in just a sec. Yep, that'll be great. Uh, so yeah, this is regard the Peak Town, I believe it's called. Peak Town Place. So, uh, and so then are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed.
Alright. With that, um, do we have any discussion ahead of our, or questions of, of staff ahead of our, uh, motion by Mister Milney? Seeing none, Mister Milney, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-seven-three-two, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located at the northwest corner of Road sixty-eight and Court Street, Pasco, Franklin County, Washington, from C one residential business to R one medium-density residential and further authorized publication by summary only.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just, uh, Mister Harpster, I guess.
The motion read R one, but the slide says R three.
Yeah, it, it should, uh, that should be corrected. It should be, uh, motion to, uh, move to an R three zoning designation.
Okay, so I amend the motion to from, instead of being R one, which is written here to R three, just to be correct.
Yeah, then we need to make a second on that.
Second.
With that, Mister Grim, you've been patiently waiting.
Oh, you're fine, Mister Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to just make sure that it was known that, um, as stated earlier, that there were no appeals, no comments on this change from the public. Um, is good information. Thank.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, uh, Miss Clerk, can we get a roll call on this one?
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimm.
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Milney.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, Miss Clerk. With that, we'll move on to item D, ordinance number four-seven-three-three. Alvarado rezoned from RS twenty to R one. And we're gonna go back to you, Mister Gonzalez.
Uh, yes, uh, good evening. Again, on August eighteenth, uh, the Hearing Examiner for Pasco conducted a public hearing related to a rezon petition located on West Court Street, approximately three hundred feet east of the Road one hundred and Court Street intersection. Uh, this site is north of Court Street. Uh, the site consists of just over three acre and, uh, three acres with a proposed R one low-density residential zoning designation. The site is currently zoned RS twenty for a residential suburban. Uh, the existing land use is low-density residential, which accommodates the R one zoning designation. Uh, the examiner has recommended an approval of the rezon petition in accordance with the rezon criteria outlined in PMC twenty-five uh, two-ten-zero-three-zero. Uh, this slide just represents the process for the petition for a rezon. Um, uh, as noted in the staff report and also attached in the council packet, uh, staff did receive four letters in opposition to the rezon petition. Uh, those four letters represented approximately sixteen, uh, individuals. Uh, letters were shared with the Hearing Examiner as well. Uh, based on the findings, the examiner recommends approval of the rezon. Um, and a, uh, ordinance is attached for council, uh, consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez. Mister Ferguson.
Yeah, great. So same thing, uh, this is also a, uh, quasi judicial hearing. Uh, it's defined as proceeding that defines legal rights and duties of specific parties. Uh, the appearance of fairness doctrine applies and has to be, uh, fair in three respects, form, substance and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows. A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council member personally. C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing of the facts. And D, whether, uh, there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And finally, E, any other conflict which council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If there are any council members that believe they have concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them know.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just letting you know, I do live three hundred feet, so I was given a notice. Um, I was doing yard work. I had a neighbor come and ask me what I thought. I told him I could not comment on this, that, uh, being on the council, that I knew this would be a, a problem. So I told him he needs to talk to somebody else, but, uh, I would not be making any kind of statement about this. And, uh, I have not talked to any of my neighbors since about this. Mom's the word and, uh, the only thing I have read is just what's in the packet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify, uh, a council member from pers- uh, participating in these proceedings? Hmm, yes, sir. So, you're seeking to disqualify one of the council members?
I don't know. I'm asking the question.
Okay.
Uh, no disrespect to Mister Milney here.
Sure.
Um, I do wonder if that, go ahead.
Let me just give you the, the basis of which you would need to
Yeah.
move forward if you decide to, to request a disqualification. So, uh, anyone seeking to disqualify a member of decision-making body from participating in a decision on the basis of a violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine must raise this challenge as soon as, uh, at, as soon as the basis for disqualification, uh, disqualification is made known and reasonably should have been known prior to the issuance of any decision. Upon failing to do so, the doctrine may, uh, not be relied on to invalidate the decision. So, if you, uh, have the, if you believe that are any of those five criteria that I, uh, asked the council members if they had any of those, uh, biases or prejudgments, uh, any conflicts, uh, then this would be the time to state why you believe one of those council members has one of those conflicts.
So before I make that statement, if I, if I do, can you repeat the one about the financial benefit or something like that?
Sure, so the, the five different potential conflicts are a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. Uh, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council member personally.
So we can stop there. That's second one. So I, I guess I just posed the question, um, if a council member lives in close proximity to the subject property, would that be considered in violation of the second one you read?
If the council member believed that they had an indirect financial interest, uh, based on that location, it would be, but that would be up to the council member to ascertain.
Okay.
If you wanna make that objection, you could do that now. And then the council member would then have to decide whether they feel like they can still remain unbiased.
Okay. Am I able to, um, I know there's a public hearing prior. Tonight is not the night for a public hearing. Can I make a case for this, for this development? I guess is my question right here and right now.
No, so, so at this point, uh, this is a, this is just on for approval of an ordinance. Now, the council has two decisions, uh, when it goes forward. One of those decisions is either to, uh, adopt the planning, or excuse me, the Hearing Examiner recommendation tonight or decide that they have, uh, they need further consideration. And then that would move to a closed record hearing. The closed record hearing, wh- the, anyone who testified at the open record hearing would then be able to restate those same claims at a closed record hearing back in front of the council. But that would need to be set by, by, uh, ordinance that has to be set, uh, several days out.
And exclusively only the individuals that spoke during the public hearing at the Hearing Examiner meeting would have the right to sort of restate their opinion during that closed hearing meeting?
They can, they can restate the same testimony that they had at the open record hearing and, uh, do it in summary only.
Okay. I think I'm, I'm not going to make an objection. Um, oh, no offense taken, Mister Milney. I just wanted to ask the question to be thoughtful about this development. So, thank you.
Great.
With that, do we have any, uh, comments, discussion from council, Mister Harpster?
Yeah, just a few comments. One, um, I read through the entire packet for this item and, um, we'll note there were some public comments. None of them presented a factual and legal argument to prevent the rezon. Most of it was, yeah, you know, nimby not in my backyard type arguments. Um, this body just a couple of months ago approved a very similar rezon for property to the east near Road fifty-two and Sylvester. And then lastly, just mentioned that staff recommends approval and our own hearing examiner, land use attorney, uh, recommends yes. The application is also consistent with our comprehensive plan as noted in the staff report. And so, uh, if council voted against this, I think it could create a liability for the city being that staff, the hearing examiner, um, recommended approval and it is in compliance with our comprehensive plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? With that, uh, is that discussion or?
Yes.
Uh, uh, go for it.
Actually, it's kind of more of a question. So, you know, as a, somebody that actually, you know, is on this road, walks the Court Street in this area. My question to Mister Ferguson would be that, say hypothetically, you're saying more against just because it's so close to the Road one hundred. The churning, I, I see, I do appreciate that there's less houses than I initially feared. Um, now would that be like, kind of like new information where I, if I was saying, I believe that just because of the churning, the churning out and then the, the crosswalk to get into Chihuahua Park, in my view, or is that just? I mean, is this something I could talk about or is this something I could just only go with what is in the packet, what the other neighbors have talked about, not new?
Yeah, so no, so that's a great question. So tonight, uh, the, the council really only has two choices. Uh, it can either move forward in adopting the Hearing Examiner recommendation tonight or make a motion to set this for further consideration, which requires setting a closed record hearing. Uh, that requires notice, there's certain notice requirements in the PMC that, uh, would put that, uh, several days out or a few weeks out. So, uh, and then at that point, what happens is a closed record, the, the council would conduct a closed record hearing where the entire record that, that was established at the open record hearing in front of the Hearing Examiner would come before the council. And the council could review that entire, uh, record as well as the folks that, that spoke at the open record hearing could, could restate their, their same arguments in summary. And then the council could at that point decide what the next step would be. But tonight, uh, you only really have two options, which is to move forward with the Hearing Examiner recommendation and approve the ordinance as written or make a motion to consider it further and at which time a closed record hearing would be scheduled.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
I guess to, to be more precise, sorry, I didn't really answer your question, which was at that, that, what you're discussing, the closed record hearing would be when you would be able to discuss that and really, uh, dig into those particular issues that you're talking about right now. But not, not tonight wouldn't be. You know, cause the, the record's not before the body.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Mister Milney, you get to make a motion or you want someone else to do it?
Um, I guess just, and, and, I mean, I'm gonna make a motion that I'd rather see it go to the, um, record close hearing, but, uh,
I mean, that's your prerogative.
I guess I would make a motion that we, since I'd rather have the full council here, all seven members, and I would also like to see everything before because it does, I think, affect road conditions and that's neighborhood. So I would prefer that, but, uh, I let the the rest of the council decide if that's warranted or not. So my motion would be The rest of the council decide if that's warranted or not. So my motion would be that we go to a closed record hearing and move forward in that direction.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Harpster, my only comment is, we just made decisions on several other items with only six members of the body. So one member being absent is not a valid argument.
Any further discussion? Let's ring this in a rule call vote, Ms. Clerk. So, just to clarify where we are here. If you vote yes for this, it would push this to a clo- uh, open rec- closed record hearing. And then we'll have to make a second motion to set a date and time, right?
Uh, no, those would be set by staff.
Oh, they'd be set by staff. Okay, regardless, this is to push it to a closed record hearing.
Okay. Council members, Grim?
No.
Harpster?
No.
Peralas?
This is to go to a.
Closed record hearing instead of accepting the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I wanna go to a closed record hearing, so, yes.
Blaisdell?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Mayor Protem Milney?
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
That'd be a no. So we're at a three-three deadlock. Where do we go from here?
That's a no.
That's a no?
It, yeah, it doesn't pass.
Okay.
I'm making a motion.
I moved to adopt ordinance number four seven three three, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located in Lot one. Short plot number ninety-four dash seven at ninety-nine oh three, West Court Street, Pasco, Franklin County, Washington. From RS twenty to R one and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Clerk, back to you.
All right. Council members, Harpster?
Yes.
Peralas?
No.
Bra, oh, sorry. Uh, Blaisdell?
Yes.
Grim?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Milney?
No.
And Mayor Serrano?
Yes.
So that passes forty-two.
Correct. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item E, which is ordinance number four seven three four, simple amendments to sections. Of the Pasco Municipal Code to Title twenty-five zoning code related to corner lot fences, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, uh, staff received a request to uh, evaluate the municipal code related to corner lot fencing, residential corner lot fencing. Uh, with the intended goal of providing additional flexibility for property owners specifically for both the height and location of uh, fencing. Uh, council may recall that this, uh, there was a similar effort pursued and led to ordinance number four six eight zero in twenty twenty-three. Uh, which did allow for increased height of fences. Uh, this proposal seeks to uh, refine that effort, uh, provide some clarity. And ensure safety and compatibility measures are in place and align with uh, feedback received from uh, community members. And so this is just timeline of the proposal. Uh, here is uh, two of the things that this proposal would, would, it's intended to allow. Which is, I mean, uh, it, adopting the um, the uh, uh, specific engineering standards. Related to sight distance uh, triangles or clear view triangles. So that's uh, being able to see uh, the visibility as you approach uh, intersecting. Um, right of ways or public streets. And on the left is purely for illustrative purposes only is showing, um, you'll see a slight jog on the south. Uh, west corner. That's that purple line and that's intended to illustrate, um, uh, what that, uh, what that triangle does. For a potential uh, fence, um, construction on a particular property. So purely illustrative purposes only, but wanted to demonstrate for uh, council and the public. What that triangle does uh, to an alignment of a fence. And so, um, uh, again, just to summarize. Uh, the proposal would remove the fence height restrictions within the secondary front yard. Uh, so there's some clarity to the municipal language regarding the secondary front yards there, the front yard there, uh, adoption of a decade, definition for that. And then addition of the reference to the Pasco design and construction standards related to sight distance triangle clear view area. Um, so happy to answer any questions, um, I can for council this evening and ordinance as prepen- prepared for uh, council consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say this is a long time coming. I appreciate staff working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Milney.
I was gonna echo those same thoughts. I appreciate you guys listening to community, listen to council. Thank you. Um. Just wanted to be fair in the city of Pasco, and so thank you for getting this done. I do appreciate it. Thanks again.
Mr. Harpster?
The, I, I think it was Mayor Protem Milney last time asked, uh, just, if we pass this tonight, does that solve the issue of? The couple who proposed the amendment?
Uh, yes, it'd get, the, yeah, the, the, uh, the criteria that they would then have to uh, meet would then be that's that quite. I'm sorry, the sight distance triangle, which we try to illustrate with that. So there might be a slight modification, but certainly gets, um, the proposal to, um. Nearly what their intended, um, uh, want was.
Thanks. Thank you. Any further conversation? Seeing none, Mr. Milney.
Thank you, Mayor. I happily move to adopt ordinance number four seven three four, amending Pasco Municipal Code, sections twenty-five point. One five point two seven zero and twenty-five point one eight zero point zero five zero to. Clarify front yard definitions and add increasing flexibility to fence height and placement and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Milney, a second by Mr. Peralas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we got one that passed unanimously. Well done, team. With that, we'll move on to item F, resolution number four five zero five, capital improvement plan or CIP for twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty projects. Uh, Director Sarah, welcome to the show.
Uh, actually, it'll be, um, me, Mr. Mayor. Um.
Ms. Sigdell, welcome to the show.
Thank you. Um, I will be very brief. Uh, we've talked about our capital improvement plan, almost a little bit more than a half a billion dollars. Uh, in capital projects over the next six years. Uh, key items are, um, or key of facts to remember. Is that we're really trying to ensure that our next two years are, um, are as close as possible. Uh, and we're looking for your approval today of the capital improvement plan, so we can take those two years of capital projects. And take it to our uh, biennial budget, uh, and be able to present with you, uh, to you a full picture of what that looks like. Uh, and, um, there are some unsecured funds in there, uh, which is normal for, um, any plan. Uh, and, um, what we can assure you as staff is that we will not be working on projects until they're fully funded. Uh, unless we're working on design that requires us to have that component completed and be able to go into construction. Be able to apply for grants, things like that. Um, but, um, overall, it is a plan and will be a living document in a sense. Uh, we will revise it on a regular basis, um, and, and recommend, um, changes to council. Uh, but at this time, we're looking for any questions that you might have and hoping for, um, an action. Uh, on adoption of the capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Ms. Sigdell. Uh, Mr. Peralas?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the only one that I had a question on, um, I, I guess I'll ask, um, Ms. Sigdell is. The Route forty extension, I sent an email earlier today to some staff and council. Uh, I, I hope this isn't set in stone. Um, this project, I would like for us to reconsider making that a two-lane roadway instead of, so. Could there be an asterisk applied to that? And, um, I don't know if it's appropriate now to talk about. Bringing back those discussions about making that two-lane roadway here right now. Um, but I would like to at least, um, talk about it. So I don't want this be concrete.
Um, it's a plan, so it is not concrete. Um, what we could do is have the discussion with council. We're working with. Mr. Bowman, our community partner, to kind of be that mediator between, uh, the two parties. So we're working through that process as we speak. Um, and, uh, what we can definitely do is, um, make some revisions as we make progress with the budget.
Okay.
Uh, because that is truly where your, um, action comes into play.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, just one wanted to, uh, mention my appreciation of staff's time, uh, helping answer several of my questions, uh, Director Rice and Director Sarah. Um, and my only question is kind of two part, what, what, since we last saw us, what changes were made to the CIP? And then secondly, what specific input, if any, from community outreach events led to changes to the CIP? Because as I mentioned before, just always disappointed by the lack of, uh, community participation and. Just wonder if those are, are even fruitful. Was there any substantial, sub- substantial changes that came about because of those events?
Uh, I will look to our team who has attended those meetings, uh, especially Mr. Rice and Ms. Sarah. Um, I will say the, the ones that I've attended, um, it's been fruitful in that we get to have, uh, conversations about the projects. And the things that city does. Um, so those types of events are always helpful. Uh, in terms of feedback, um. From my memory, there was nothing significant. There was a lot of questions from the community, uh, regarding projects that were of interest to them.
Well, that, that's helpful too, because the, sort of like with my questions, you know, I didn't, I don't think I asked for anything to be changed. I just needed a, a, a better understanding of this stuff. So I can see how those.
Yeah.
Outreach would be helpful in that regard.
Um, just one comment regarding feedback. I think the one thing that came, um, repeatedly was similar to. Our outreach doing transportation improvement plan and had to do with evaluating alternatives for ramps. Or some way to increase the capacity of Route sixty-eight. Um, this plan does not include studies. But the TIP does, so, um, it did not result in a change in this plan. And then the only change we did to the previously presented plan here were some corrections on some funding that was shown as unknown. But actually, it was unsecured grants. So we were able to modify some of those and reduce the number of unknown funding sources. Because truly they were expected to be grants instead.
Thanks. Thank you. Seeing no. No further comments, uh, Mr. Milney.
I move to approve resolution number forty-five oh five, approving the capital improvement plan for calendar years twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Milney, second by Ms. Blaisdell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're on a roll. Uh, item G, resolutions number four five zero six and four five zero seven, surplus and sale of city property along Burden Boulevard. It looks like this gets back to Ms. Sigdell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if, uh, memory serves you all right. Um, a couple of months ago, we had discussed a sale of, uh, another Giza pad site, which is a, a site right. Um, on Burden Boulevard, um, as you can see, uh, on the pictures there. Uh, this is a site where there's an interested party. Um, for, who's interested in building a restaurant, which we believe would be a good fit, uh, for that area. And, um, we are, uh, very close to all of the due, completion of all of the due diligence. And looking to close on the property and sell the property, uh, at this point. So we're looking for your approval for the city manager. To execute the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Sigdell. Any discussion by council? Seeing none, Mr. Milney, a motion, or two?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number forty-five oh six, declaring city-owned real property surplus, setting the minimum price. And the method of sale of parcel number one one seven three seven zero zero one eight, and further authorize the city manager to sell the property through. Realtor listing for a minimum price determined through market analysis.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Milney, second by Ms. Blaisdell. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Milney, a second?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number four five oh seven, approving the sale of certain city-owned real property. One point six nine acre located along Burden Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Milney, second by Ms. Blaisdell, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms., uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. With that, we'll move on to item H, resolution number four five zero eight, amendment number one to the comprehensive solid waste. Collection agreement with Basin Disposal Inc. Back to you, Ms. Sigdell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what we have today is an amendment to our contract with BDI, uh, Basin Disposal Inc. Uh, and what they're requesting is to not perform, uh, their regular residential and commercial services. On New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas. Uh, at this time, they serve the community three hundred and sixty-five days. A year, which is quite impressive. Um, and, um, uh, what they're requesting for is to suspend. Services for these three days and they will be catching up on the following days, uh, for the homes and businesses that. They would not be collecting for those three days. Uh, there's also six other days which are kind of coincide with the regular holidays that we have. Uh, where they would also not, uh, do a regular drop box collection. And with that, I'm open for any questions that you have. And we also have, uh, Rebecca Francic from BDI, um, in case you have any specific questions.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, just, I would be, um, definitely for this, just talking with, um, Ms. Francic. Wondering, you know, if there's an opportunity, since our contract basically allows pretty much anything to get picked up at a single family residence. Other than, uh, things that have, you know, refrigeration, that there may be some chemicals in there, whatever. Just going forward, just kind of food for thought. What can we do to clean the city of Pasco up? And, you know, leverage that even more for people to get rid of unwanted things would be something I would love to see. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I have no issue with people having wonderful and sacred holidays off with their families.
I, I was just gonna concur on that, uh, you know, council, we give up a lot of our time to be here and help out when we can, so it's. Kind of shocking that it's been this long that, uh, we've never done this before. So I, uh, definitely wholeheartedly agree that, uh, we should give people that. Do a great service for us that most people in the community don't want to do, at least give them some time with their families and, uh, I'm glad this was brought before us, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Milney, would you like, would you like, Ms. Francic, do you have anything specific or are we just up there preemptively? Thank you very much for your attendance and, uh, staying this late. Mr. Milney?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number forty-five oh eight, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment with basin disposal incorporated for the. Comprehensive solid waste collection agreement.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Milney, a second by Mr. Grim. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're on a roll, passes unanimously. With that, we'll move on to item number ten, which is unfinished business, ordinance number four seven two nine, amending section of the Pasco. Municipal, municipal code Title seventeen, sign code. And I will say, thank you very much for your services out there, folks from BDI. Ms. Francic, please pass that along, um, to everybody and, uh, hopefully now they can enjoy. Their Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years. So, again, thank you for the service y'all do. Back to where I was, uh, item ten A, unfinished business, uh, uh, ordinance number four seven two nine. Amending sections of the Pasco Municipal Code Title seventeen, sign code and PMC two five nine five point zero five zero related to billboards. Mr. Gonzalez?
Ye- yes, and this is just a quick overview. This item has been shared with council, uh, several times over the past, uh, several months as well. Um, on February fifth, uh, Meadow Outdoor Advertising brought forward a proposal to amend the code to allow billboards, uh, including digital work. Digital billboards in the city of Pasco. Following that, uh, workshops were conducted on July eighth, August twenty-sixth, and September twenty-third to further discuss the amendment. Um, staff, uh, did issue a CIPA, an environmental, uh, determination on September thirtieth. Uh, no public comments were received on that environmental, uh, determination. Um, during the August twenty-six workshop, workshop, there were some changes. That, uh, did change the draft ordinance to reflect the, um, application, um, and intent from the applicant. Uh, first, instead of prohibiting billboards throughout the entire downtown Pasco overlay, uh, this was refined to prohibit billboards only in the designated core area. As determined by the, as, uh, identified by the applicant. Um, secondly, uh, there was the removal of the restrictions of freestanding pole signs. Outside the downtown core area to align with the, um, uh, the previous, um, uh, proposal related to allowing billboards in the core area. Not in the core area. And then lastly, um, updated the definition of digital billboards to include, uh, regulations on light intensity. Again, these changes were made to reflect the applicant's proposal, um, and the request itself. So, uh, with that, an ordinance has been, uh, prepared for council consideration. And staff, um, and I believe the applicant is here, uh, to answer, uh, any potential questions from council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion by council? Mr. Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add that as a board member of the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, when I was at the meeting, when this was brought up. And there was, there were no dissensions to this project, um, moving forward for the sake of business in Pasco.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Seeing no for the likes, Mr. Milney?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four seven two nine, amending Pasco Municipal Code, section seventeen point ten point zero one zero. Seventeen point one five point zero one zero. Seventeen point one-five point zero-one-zero, seventeen point one-five zero-four-zero. And twenty-nine point nine-five zero-five-zero. Providing for off-premise advertising billboard signs and regulation of off-premises advertising billboard signs. And further authorized publication by summary only.
I'll second that, so got a motion by Mister Millie, a second by myself, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So that passes four to two with Grim and Blaisdell dissenting. That moves us on to item number eleven, new business, um with that, I need to take a break. Let's, it's nine-thirty-two, let's call it, let's call eight minutes and be back at nine forty, thank you. It is nine forty-one, we appreciate your patience, we're now on to item eleven, which is new business. Presentation of twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget, Mister Lincoln.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, um so, let's see, next slide. There we go, so tonight, we're gonna start the overview of the the general fund of the budget, um you can go to the next slide. There we go, so the the general fund of the budget covers sort of your your most significant expenses when it comes to. Personnel and um it it covers things like public safety, parks and rec and and C E D. We we started talking a little bit about uh the utility fund a couple of weeks ago. But over the next three weeks, the tonight included, we'll be talking more in depth about where the the general fund is. So um next slide, please, the the. So to give a little bit of an overview of how the the tax structure, the revenues work for for this, uh some of you've seen this slide before. But I think it's important to highlight the fact that for the the population that we have. You can see in the the, under the property tax rate, and and that's twenty-twenty-three's number. So for twenty-twenty-four, it's it's less than a dollar uh per one thousand. You can see in the next section, you've got the assessed valuation. So our A V, and I'm sorry, this is really small font, but the A V, the the twelve billion dollars. Has gone up significantly recently, but it's also gone up post the um the 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 cap that's put in place for the one percent for property tax increases. So it's it's really hard to keep up uh at a one percent increase, especially with inflation the way it's been recently. So you can see in the next, the next section over, you've got the property tax collection, which we're in the 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 third place there. And then you can see the sales tax, which has grown significantly over the the, since since twenty eighteen, um by about sixty or sixty-five percent. But you can see compared to Kenwick, who's a similar population to ours, we're we're still below by about ten million dollars per per year. And then you can see that for for even City of Richland, who uh has twenty thousand few, roughly twenty thousand fewer residents. That there's still a, they're four million dollars ahead per year. So it's it's a challenge to try and keep up when it comes to those kind of numbers, to make sure that your services are on par with with the other municipalities. Especially our our neighbors, which is who we're most lo- most commonly going to be compared to. Um so we we do at least have the uh the benefit of having the the lowest property tax rate that's on there. But as you'll hear from your your constituents and our residents, most often, that it doesn't feel that way. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that our schools, for lack of a better term, have been really successful in passing their their tax measures. And um that that is the the largest percent of your property tax funding, where it goes to is the the schools, next slide, please. So when it comes to our uh assessed valuation, you can see that uh around twenty-twenty is where the the cross happens over. Where uh the A A V, well, I'm sorry, the A V keeps going up to the the twelve billion mark, which was a a significant point to hit. And since about twenty seventeen and a half, twenty eighteen, you've seen a a a decline as the uh residents go up. As we as we see more people move into town, you see a a drop in the um the property tax rate. So like I said, now it's probably below a dollar and we'll see it be uh dropping further uh in the the coming year likely. The A V has gone up a hundred and twenty-five percent since twenty eighteen. So this is a a slide that you'll see in a a lot of presentations from municipal governments, just sort of the breakdown of how your property taxes are broken up by jurisdictions. So you can see where the school district is, the the state, the the combined two are the 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 largest components. The city gets fourteen percent, county ten, and then three would be groups like the the port that that get a slice of the the property taxes as well. So it's, I think, just another way to highlight that um though the property taxes may feel like they're. Significant portion of someone's um annual bills, it's not that the city is getting a huge portion of that, it's it's other groups that are that are really the. Sort of the winners when it comes to that percentage, next slide, please. Uh I I think the other thing that I'd point out on the the previous slide, which we can stay here, is just again, that the the property taxes have a hard time keeping up with our recent inflation. On this slide, you'll see that since the the twenty-eighteen mark, there's that sixty percent increase. Though we're now experiencing a little bit of a slowdown, and I can say that in 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 sales tax. And and most of the cities that I've talked to, they're they're seeing the same de- decline in uh sales tax collection. Uh you can see where the budget is versus where we're estimating the the actual, which is actually further um decline. Though i- it's still been up, it's it's still a significant increase over our our historic averages. So it's not to say that um sales tax has been problematic, but it's it's always nice for a city that's so reliant on sales tax. Which most cities are, to to see those numbers continue to increase. And thankfully, we've got a part of town that's that's ripe for for development in the the Broadmoor area. So at some point, those uh those catch-ups will happen. But right now, we're seeing the, you know, sort of national, national slowdown uh of sorts. Which is impacting us as well. This slide speaks to our our healthy reserves. So right now, for the the general fund, there's a a little over thirty million dollars in reserve. There's also an economic development fund that that has a reserve balance and and uh it. It's um something that has been increasing continually, but as you're also aware, the twenty-three and twenty-four budget. Was also balanced on reserves to the tune of seven point, seven point five million dollars per year. And thankfully, in the first year, um that ended up being zero, and a lot of that has to do with the staffing increases. That weren't realized until partway through twenty-twenty-three and then further realized in twenty-twenty-four. The uh. Th- this year's budget, it'll probably be four million or so of the the reserve use instead of seven and a half million. So we're we're tracking that, but we're we're glad to see that it's not gonna be closer to the seven and a half million, which was in the approved twenty-four budget. So on this slide, you'll see sort of what our estimates are looking for, uh expenses and revenues for the the next two years. So on on this slide, it's it's important to note that the number at the very bottom, the proposed reserve usage. Is is down significantly from the previous biennium. However, it doesn't include things like uh our cost of living increase, it doesn't include things like. Ho- holding open some positions, which I'll go to, go into in more further detail in a minute. And it doesn't talk about, it doesn't go into the uh vehicle replacement deferment, which isn't a hundred percent. But we are looking at how can we extend the amount of time between servicing or purchasing certain vehicle types. As a way to try and protect the budget a little bit more. See, I've got a couple of extra notes on here. I think the difference between this budget and the previous biennial budget, the proposed reserve usage on here. I I I think is is likely more accurate than the previous uh biennial budget. In that the department directors have sat down for the last, you know, couple of months in preparing for this, for their presentations that are coming up over the next couple of weeks. And have really done a lot of trimming of of their budgets. And that's reflected in the amount of the reserve that's that's asking to be used at this point. That certainly does not preclude council from um making further adjustments. I'm I'm certainly not keen on presenting a a budget that's being balanced on reserves, e- even when we have healthy reserves. But I can, I can confidently say that staff has really gone through their budgets and eliminated things that probably council will even be uncomfortable with. To a a certain level, so as department budgets go through, um it'll be important to highlight those those things that have been pared down. Fairly painstakingly. So on on this slide, we talk about the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four impacts and how we kind of got to where we are today. So um the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, I think, made some pretty big assumptions of economic growth. That was gonna happen in the the um Broadmoor area in particular. It also accounted for, we had grant funds for uh firefighters that are now falling off of our our grant funds. Um and and you'll see that there were fifty-three positions that were added in the general fund. And the fifteen million thankfully isn't actually what's gonna be realized. And the fifteen million, thankfully, isn't actually what's gonna be realized. It's gonna be closer to four million. So that that further contributes hopefully to our our carryover. That'll be important for the the reserve amount as we go forward into the next part of the 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 next biennium. Further challenges have been the economic climate that we're we're faced with at the moment. Uh, I think there's a lot of uncertainty that people face, especially during ramp-ups to presidential elections. You've you've got a a pretty big spike in inflation that's happened recently that's impacted everyone's buying ability. You've seen, um, the cost of of doing business in terms of building homes and building properties has has significantly risen. That's contributed to a a bit of the slowdown. And then, like we showed on the previous slide, you've seen things like sales tax that have been slowing down. So unfortunately, we have to pay the same prices for services and and items and personnel as our our partners across the river. But we've got a a little bit of a deficiency in terms of what the resources are that we have when we're going forward. So opportunities, we have a lot of growth potential. We we have a pretty big section of the north part of town that's still in our urban growth boundaries. We've got the Broadmoor area that is ripe for development, that the city has been a a partner in putting in the the roads and utilities for that project. We've got a lot of homes in the pipeline as far as the development side of things. We we are hopeful that sales tax will start to come in more strongly, though it it's really gonna be because of new growth, not because of something that's significantly happening at the national level. And then, of course, we we monitor closely our assessed valuations. Some of the things that councils had on their their to-do list and and asking of staff really comes down to the the right side there. So, um, we're looking at streamlining services, or seeing what programs we no longer need to offer or should no longer be offering, just based on, we've always done it this way, isn't gonna be an acceptable approach. We wanna remove redundant or non-applicable codes that leads to time being spent on billing people on items that collect negligible amounts, but put a lot of effort or or cost into trying to collect funds. We wanna try and leverage technology where we can to to make things easier. And then, of course, one of the things that council's been really good about talking about is directing staff to review fees and bring those things forward on a more regular basis, so that we're trying to to keep up those rates and spread around some of the the impact for development or other costs on the 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 users of some of those services. So some of the the things that council could consider over the the coming months or or even as we go into the new year, there there could be a an opportunity for a a subcommittee or or even the the council as a full body to talk about some options when it comes to revenues. So one one thing that could be considered is a a levied lid lift. That could be either general, or that could be specifically targeted for public safety services. And that's something that, as we go through the the discussion for the departments, that'll be critical for for council to keep in mind that that's an that's an option. Obviously, revision of the fees that we just talked about. Another thing that that council should consider over the coming biennium is is looking at the the thought of a transportation benefit district. This has a couple flavors. There's one where you can increase tabs at increments, or you can do it as a a sales tax. Obviously, a lot of study would need to be done on that, but we're also seeing that more often, there's folks that do the grants for for transportation, the state and federal government, are looking for cities to utilize the the tools that are in the toolbox, and this is certainly one of them. Most recently, it was something that Richland had used to help provide the the Duportail Bridge. It also could help for targeted things like traffic calming and and pavement preservation. Uh, I think it's also important to note that a good portion of the west part of town was basically paved all at the same time. So in theory, a lot of that will eventually go all at the same time, and finding creative resources to to cover that at at some point in the future is gonna be something for for council to consider. Another option to look at for parks funding in particular is a Metropolitan's Park Park District. That's a way to basically create a a separate funding source specifically for for park needs. And then there's the library district is is something else that we could partner with the the current library to ask that they put that forward as a a ballot measure. And and currently, that's two point five million in twenty twenty-five and two point eight million in twenty twenty-six. So not an insignificant amount of resources to be put towards that. So some of the considerations going forward for the, from from the work plan that we wanna keep in mind is is obviously economic development is still top of mind. And the way that we can try and bring in new revenues is is through the the things that enhance things like sales tax or some of those development fees. Obviously, public safety is one of the, if not the number one priority for for the city council. We've got our comp plan update that's coming up, so looking at the land uses and and how how the city's growing is gonna be an important aspect of of how we grow and how we move forward. The level of customer service that we provide is something that we're continuing to work on and and making sure that we're working with outside, outs, uh, excuse me, internal and outside resources to make sure that we're providing that on a on a good level. The development process is something that I think we've we've also been trying to look at. We're in the midst of, um, working on some code revisions that will hopefully make things better for the development community as well. And then, of course, the city council had also mentioned the desire to have a water conservation program. So some of the things that we're doing to address the the concerns that we have as staff for the the budget is a reduction of the headcount through retirements and and vacancies. So this'll be more of a targeted approach versus something like a hiring freeze, because there are some critical positions that we'd wanna be able to fill. And and I think we have the responsibility to fill regardless. Though because of the the staffing levels from the last biennial budget, I think it's important to take a look and be more critical of the the positions that we have and making sure that we're properly reducing where we can to to make sure that we're getting more in line with the budget that we have, not perhaps the budget that we wish we had. The other item that we'll we'll mention next is is some of the vehicle replacement costs. That's a significant cost as well to the city. And one of the things that we can do is is maybe push out a year and look at some of the leasing options that we we need to take advantage of in certain other departments. Another area of cost is reduction for travel and training to to conferences. There's opportunities sometimes to bring trainers in or to partner with other local jurisdictions in our area to try and spread the cost around for for some of those training opportunities. Uh, overtime is another significant portion of our our budget and something that anybody who has their hourly personnel is well aware that they need to be monitoring that more more closely than we have in the past. The State Auditor's Office also has a a a part of their team that doesn't do audits, but actually looks at implementing lean and process improvements. They do that at zero cost. Um, I think we pay for it through other means of paying for their services. So they they come out and can help with some of the issues that that we have. So common things that you'd look at is how utility billing works or or permit processing. And and then, of course, there's other opportunities to to combine or optimize community events that perhaps we've done as as single one-offs. So, for example, we did Fall Festival, and then we would do Spooky Halloween. There's opportunities to do things like combine those together, so that it's more of a a single event instead of holding multiple events. And I'm I'm sure there's other opportunities for for how we can combine and 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 accomplish that goal as well. Some of the other items that came out of our budget talks with department directors, freezing specialty movements in the police department, and and Chief Roski can obviously go into more detail in his presentation of of what that entails and what that means. Our procurement right now is sort of done on a department-by-department basis, and we think that centralizing that will see a a significant amount of savings for the city. Evaluating programs like the Citizens Academy, increasing the ti- the time cycle between our computer replacements is is something that could could lead to other savings. Same with how we purchase parts, that kind of goes to our centralized procurement concept. And and sort of the theme of this is really a budget reset. That this is the first time in a while that we've been kind of in a position to look with a more critical eye at some of the expenditures that we have as a as a city. And I I think while it's maybe uncomfortable and and something that isn't super fun to talk about, I think we're seeing departments get really creative and talk about things that they don't necessarily need need in the short term. And when the resources come back, then it's an opportunity to take a revised budget back to council and and see what opportunities there are for growth and expansion. But looking at things through a lean process improvement in in a lot of areas is is something that's good and needs to be a part of our culture as an organization. And hopefully, there's a silver lining to going through a a a belt tightening that that we know is is not a forever belt tightening. So over the next couple of weeks, we'll have more presentations from the department level. They'll go in more in depth on on what they're proposing for their budgets. We'll have a public hearing on property tax and general fund on October twenty-first as well. I guess I should also note that one of the things that this budget does anticipate is council considering sweeping back the property taxes that are banked in capacity right now. That's about six hundred thousand dollars or so that's in bank capacity. And while not a large amount, it's it's something that I think we would be more comfortable, perhaps is the way to put it, uh, making sure that those dollars are being put to use. And just for for scale, so you have an idea, I think that on a home, on the average home, that would be about a fifty-seven dollar per year increase on their property tax bill. Is that right, Recha? Thirty-seven? Okay. We'll we'll have that number buttoned up by the time we're actually presenting that that item on the twenty-first. But, um, just just so you know, that is part of the the consideration that we ask council keep in mind. Next slide, please. And here's some other items that we'll be looking at throughout the, so so basically, budget season is going to be the remainder of the year. You'll you'll have opportunities to talk about the budget every chance you want to. And sometimes, when you don't, uh, we'll we'll make sure it's on the agenda for you in some fashion or another. So, um, you'll you'll have the the items on the twenty-eighth, talking about some of the capital funds. We'll have, um, other ancillary operationals on the November fourth meeting. And then we'll continue with more of the utility rates as well. It's really the tip of the iceberg. This is times where council's able to provide more feedback, get more in depth, and and really make sure that our our first swipe at the budget is in line with where where it should be for your your comfort, because ultimately, again, this is your budget. Next slide, please. Happy to try and answer as many questions as we can.
Sounds good. Thank you for that, Mr. Lincoln. What questions or comments do we have from council? I know we've got a lot, so we'll try to move through them quickly, Mr. Prowl.
I'll go ahead and start it off. So I guess, when do you guys start forecasting for the the budget? I mean, do we just start, like, so just twenty-two, twenty-four hits? Then we start looking at numbers for like twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, or do you guys start looking like in twenty twenty-three?
I I think we try to look ahead when we set the budget, so twenty-two, we're looking for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and then we try to monitor throughout as best we can, but it's it's definitely a moving target. And I think since COVID, it's been something that's been a little all over the place, usually in a good way, but recently not as 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 positive as has been.
I mean, so like us being in a in a deficit in or in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, would it wasn't really a surprise? Or did we foresee this coming? Because I remember we have like an ARPA financial presentation. I really didn't get that vibe from the presentation. And then we're spending money, um, you just talked about the bank capacity, six hundred thousand, you know? We just bought a piece of property for six hundred thousand. So I'm just trying to figure out for future, I don't know if I'll be here forever, or at least a term or two, when exactly we're gonna talk about these types of things and when those conversations are gonna happen. Because it just seems like, even based on the information in the packet, I mean, looks like the city's been running a deficit for a while. So, and I, you know, I, you know, super citizen, I, you know, I watched council meetings. I never really ever saw that talked about, um, at all, about running deficits. I thought that was kind of odd, and the regularity for me, when I was looking through the packet, I'm like, oh, jeez. I mean, substantial deficits. You know, back from twenty twenty, you know, one point two, then eleven point one, that just seems awfully awfully odd. And then a surplus, and then negative, negative, negative. It just seems like, well, then why aren't we pulling back on the spending? Why are we increasing our debt every year? So I mean, those are kind of my questions. I mean, I I would hate to have another city council member go through this in another four or five years, 'cause we're not watching our spending and taking on our the the debt. So that's why I wanted to understand where the where we're at with the reserves, which seems like we're like a little over thirty mil. So if you take in consideration the deficits, I mean, next year, I mean, I guess it's a moving target, like you said. So we're already looking at like twenty-six mil probably in the bank. And then, um, then so forth, if we're not getting any more revenue. It just seems odd that we haven't tried to pull back on any of the spending. And I mean, if we kind of knew this information, this would have been more prudent during the time when we were trying to do our work plan for the year. Not hearing it now, because honestly, some of those things, I don't think we're gonna be able to do any of those goals or, you know, put a plan together. I mean, honestly, I think as a city, we need to pull back on spending immediately. 'Cause we don't see, I don't see any growth right now over in Road One Hundred. Sure, we have the PFD, but that's really about it. We don't have no, no more sales tax. And then even looking at those numbers, you know, you know, you go to the DOR, the Department Revenue Site, and then we're like in the negative when it comes to sales tax, um, dollars increase. I mean, for the last year, twenty twenty-three, there was one positive quarter, the rest were all negative. So really haven't seen our sales tax go up. So I guess I'm trying to understand from a staff perspective, if you have all these numbers and figures, why aren't we pulling back on spending? Why, maybe we don't, we can't get to do that capital improvement, uh, project without getting more funding, and you know? So I'm just trying to understand from your perspective, why haven't we pulled back in the last year or two? 'Cause I believe you've been here for a few years, I would, I think.
So the the last budget was was passed while I was interim, and and Mr. Zabel was the one that presented the budget. And and that was a time where the seven and a half million per per year, and thankfully, that didn't end up being seven and a half million per year. And that's why you're seeing my presented budget with a significant cuts. I mean, when we get into the department presentations, you'll you'll hear that probably the discomfort in the voice of some of the the directors. So I I I agree, I didn't feel comfortable putting forward a budget where where it would have been asked by by staff to start with. We we sat down and had many, many hours of of how to get it to a level where I thought it was more appropriate. And and by no means, i- if if having any deficit is is uncomfortable, which I I can understand it could be, then we need to go back and and find those other cuts and and present those to you. I I don't think we're done. Again, this is the sort of the starting point. I don't know if you had something, Recha?
Yeah, I would I would just kind of like to add a little bit of a finance perspective on some of the deficits that you were seeing, as in the drop in reserves. Usually, the philosophy with reserves, and we have a a significant amount. Usually, you know, we should have maybe nine to twelve million dollars in reserves. We have a lot more than that. And there's a reason for that, which is that we've we've had really good years where we've made more revenue than expenses. And, um, there's always a time when you draw down on your savings account. The ideal is to do one-time things. And where we're at right now is that we're not doing one-time things. And that is where we really need to look at our expenses and ensure that, um, we're managing that on a regular basis. Just for, you know, a household budget, you're, um, if you're paying your mortgage with your savings, that's an uncomfortable spot to be at. But overall, we've done significant amount of capital projects throughout the years. And those are the one-time things that you utilize your reserve for. You save up for it, and then you draw down. And then there's a reserve that you're saving for operational, uh, security. So overall, you might see some drops and and some drops and increases over many years. And those are to be expected.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Prowl, Mr. Milne.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, obviously, as a business owner, you can't, you know, take deficit deficit. I know we're talking government, which is a little different, but, uh, so my point is, you know, the the last one where you said where Mr. Zabel handled the budget, you know, when you were interim, and it was a loss of seven point five, seven point five. The first time, it was zero. The next time, it's, you know, four million for this year. Was there cost savings, or was it just like the luck of the draw? How did, how did you go from a loss of seven point five million, and then it became zero? I mean,
I I think a lot of it had to do with how long it took to to hire up some of those positions. I think that was, I mean, it's, our personnel expense is the biggest expense that we have as a the city outside of, you know, CIP-type project. So especially the general fund, it's it's personnel. So without having all of the detail in front of me, likely, it was, it it took a while in twenty-three to to hire what we hired. You also had grant funding, and I don't know, maybe the grant is is falling off this year. You also had grant funding, and I don't know, maybe the grant is is falling off this year, I'd for, it falls off next year, so. Likely it's just the the lag, and then you have positions that end up being open at random times, and they, you you. You end up with savings through through that that process, especially with our budget that I think had. Built-in comfort zones for for certain parts of the budget, probably overtime in certain areas, just. Areas that hadn't been looked at in a while, so even though you budgeted with a a a. A a deficit, planning on spending savings, I think it ended up kind of coming out in the wash when you have churn, normal churn of of positions and things like that.
Okay, and I guess uh follow up to that question, so. I know we said, you know, obviously, you just don't really don't know as far as, you know, forecasting, you try your best. But so of course, it was zero, four million loss this year. You're pretty confident, though, in next year, twenty five and twenty six, that there is actually, it's not gonna be. Next year, you're gonna come back and say, well, we didn't lose that money, I mean, you're you're pretty confident that this is gonna be seven point five million and and eight million.
I'm I'm confident that if if the directors, the managers, the staff stick to the budget, that that'll be. Only as high as the re- re- use of the reserve has to go. But it's really, in previous years, I would say that the budget had. A a little more flexibility built into it, where you could get, you know, this was what we think the the costs will be, and and perhaps it would go over a little bit here and there. This budget we've gone through with a more of a fine tooth comb and pulled out a lot of anything that would be considered extra. Anything that can be kind of moved around to cover an expense for for something else, something unforeseen, there's not a lot of cushion in in this budget, so. I would say, while we said seven point five in twenty twenty three and ended up being zero, there is not a. A large cushion, if any, built into the what's being presented right now.
Okay, thank you for that, um try to finish up here. So, uh like, so what if there's a new administration, you know, presidential and interest rates go down, you know, save more the economy? Would we see a difference, or is that still, I mean, you're still going on the same line, I mean, would like the interest rates change, say the price of gas goes down? Hypothetically, I mean, would we see a change in the budget, or would it be pretty much still where we're at?
I I think likely what you'd end up seeing is is uh an increase in revenues, if if certain things align at the the federal level, things start to go well for the economy. So you could see um development becoming easier for for folks that are in that that line of work. And projects coming out of the ground on shorter timelines for for them, if if they're holding off for, you know, economic reasons right now. So certainly, you could see the revenues end up coming higher, and and that's why you have an opportunity to do budget amendments and that, you know, the. Usually at some point in the, towards the end of the first year of the the biennial budget, there's an opportunity to bring back the the budget to council and say. Here's some of the things that have worked or not worked, so you could you can make amendments at that time.
Okay, and then the final question is, so say, I mean, again, this is the worst case scenario, say, in the Adams Development Property, say, nothing happens. I mean, are we like, really, like, pardon my French, but are we like really screwed in two years?
No.
When all this is starting to come due, I mean, when we build the roads, or, I mean.
No.
Talking about losing half of our reserves, basically, uh within two-year timeframe, I mean, these things kind of worry me, or at least.
You you not, no, you wouldn't lose half your reserves in the the two-year timeframe, over uh four or five years, you'd you'd spend it down pretty significantly, but. But that aside, um the the way that we've structured and and the way that council has signed off is. We have partners now to help carry the the debt for for paying for the projects through the Broadmoor Project, so. That we've we've got financial aid basically while while we're paying those those down, so we've got the PFD who's a partner on that. And we've got um the Adamses as well, who are who are helping make those payments as well, so. And that wasn't something that was foreseen in the the last budget, so that's something going forward, where they'll be helping um carry that that cost for us, so. While we'll have to make payments on it, there at least, we we've got partners with skin in the game now as well to hopefully incentivize development to happen there.
Okay, well, if you could, uh I don't want to take up too much time, but if you could send me some more of the information at a later date as far as.
I'd anticipate a lot more sit downs and going through budget further uh as as we go through the process, and I'd be happy to get you more information, of course.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milne, uh Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I'm just, I have a lot of thoughts here, and I'm just gonna just kind of roll roll them off, they're not very succinct or very organized. But I do agree with Councilmember Peralos, so a lot of this would have been nice to know, really just on our onboarding at the beginning of the year. You know, if we were to sat down, you know, y- you guys did a good job of explaining, you know, just the structure of the budget and the utility budget. And some of the differences, but if you had to sit down with us at the council and said, look, we have been deficit spending the last five out of six years, and. You know, if we had to spit in the wind, you know, this doesn't look, you know, too good, you know, either. I think would have been extremely helpful for a lot of the decisions, you know, that we made in this year, so. You know, perhaps in coming years or onboarding years, I think new councils passed our term or two, right, Mr. Peralos? Would probably do a a lot of good, just having that transparency and just realizing kind of what we're getting into, and. I mean, we have a quarter, I I appreciate having three months to figure this out, but. I I think some decisions would have been made differently by the council, and we'd known this at the beginning of the year, and. Mo- moving on, I, you know, look forward to some of those department level reports, I, you know. Read down line by line, and I saw, you know, overtime is was addressed there was significantly reduced, but. You know, I do have to ask the questions, you know, what service are are we, you know, is the public gonna be missing by, you know, all of those kind of cuts, and. You know, how is that gonna affect, you know, whether it be fire, police, or, you know, s- just some of the other ones, um even code enforcement after. After a fire, and they've got to go fence it up, and, you know, those kind of things, so, you know, that's gonna be really um. You know, interesting to hear about, and then, you know, just some specific ones, you know, just looking at us, I mean, even budgeted, you know, fifteen grand for city council travel. I ain't going anywhere, uh you know, at this point, just, you know, i- i- it was only fifteen thousand, but man, you know, when we're looking at being. You know, seven million short, um I I just think we need to look at, you know, every little thing, or just even. Even the city manager's office showed, you know, significant growth, and so I think, you know, um myself and other council members will be interested where that's all coming from. And then even just some areas in the budget, like um I was looking at the Tri-City's um animal shelter, where. It seemed to be itemized in previous years, but now it was kind of lumped together in one, you know, fund, and so. As I was going through, I'd kind of be curious about that, and then also, since we, you know, had this covid experience in twenty and twenty one. I thought it might be helpful to myself and the rest of council to see twenty twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen too. Just to see where this come from, and I see, you know, just even, you know, some of the numbers you expressed, you know, have doubled, like the um assessed values since two thousand eighteen. It'd be really interesting to see how that compares with population and other, and just kind of, since we did have that big covid hiccup. Or cough, maybe I should say, to, you know, just really um get get a bigger perspective where this is coming from, and. You know, I appreciate um the deputy city manager talking about um, you know, the reserves and, you know, banking and all that kind of stuff. And there really is a fine line, I think it's really important for us to remember, this is the taxpayers' money, this is, you know, the citizens of Pasco, when we say we have this reserve. It's actually their money, and there's just a fine line between how much of the taxpayers' money are we banking versus um. Drawing it down too much and bankrupting, like we've seen so many other municipalities because of their, um you know, whether it's retirements or. Some of these unfunded things, and so, you know, I really appreciate you guys being sensitive to that, because there, you know, there is a fine line, and you know. As as you've said yourself, Mr. Lincoln, a lot of municipalities are looking at revenues down right now, and I guess kind of my last comment. You know, it's just some some of the revenue, I mean, you know, as far as property tax goes, I mean, it's really the county that assesses and does all that, but. You know, everybody thinks it's the city, for the most part, raising the taxes, and so, um. You know, I I know the deputy cit- city manager Sigdel um made a presentation about this a couple of weeks ago, and you. Touched on tonight, we've heard others, and, uh you know, i- i- in a sense, it does make sense to me, but I'm not sure it's gonna make sense to the taxpayer, is all. All they are gonna feel is I'm hurting right now, here's Pasco raising my taxes, and even though, I mean, you guys have made a great com. Case, you know, in comparison to the other two municipalities, that we always want you comparing us to, that, you know, there is a significant difference there. I just, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a really tough sell with the taxpayer, and so, you know, as much as we can continue to look at. Like like you said, um you know, assessing fees, are we charging a fair amount, are there things that we're undercharging, are there things we're overcharging? But for this body to be able to tell the public, hey, you are getting a fair price for this um for this service is. You know, where I'd, you know, really like to lean into, and then, you know, I think. We we need to look forward, but it's hard not to, you know, feel a little injured by the past, you know, the. You know, the twenty percent addition, you know, in the last couple of years of, you know, of team members, when everything's looked great and promising. I guess I'll close with, um, a farmer once told me, it's not the bad years that hurt a farmer. It's the good years that hurt a farmer, because they go out and they spend all this money and buy new combines and all this kind of stuff, and. You know, get themselves in trouble, and so, yeah, I just, um, I think we just owe it to the taxpayers and the citizens of Pasco. To look at every possible scenario we can internally before we look to them, so that's really where I'm at. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm, before I get to you, Mr. Harpster, I'm gonna kind of dovetail off that, I I do recall the hard conversations that we had. A few years back in our budget setting, and I recall specifically speaking with you, Mr. Lincoln, both you and I expressed significance and concern. Of those good years, and those good years were covid federal funds, which we all knew were one time. And I remember expressing concern of of, and again, you agreeing, and I I think Mr. Milne was on here. There was a concern that we were upsizing the city staff to meet the needs, but we were doing it with money that was play money beyond three years. We I, we all kind of knew that we'd come out of covid, and we've recovered fairly well, but we've also had some serious issues here with inflation, and and, you know. Need to beat the dead horse. Where I think I'm I'm very concerned is um, we're gonna. We are going to put you and staff in the position of determining which cuts can be made to not affect services. Which really fundamentally, we all know, this is zero. There's a distinction that we're gonna have to make between the most um necessary and and critical services. To, you know, those that we can survive without, which is really, really unfortunate. Um obviously, we're compounded with issues like cost overruns on major infrastructure project, for which we receive good funds. But we still have a lot of work to do. Uh with that, I know your light's been on, you've been patiently waiting, Mr. Harpster, I'll probably circle back after a minute.
Thanks. First question, the, I think it was page eleven on the report, the reserve history. You know, from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty three, our reserve funds do trend upward, but. In in from twenty twenty to twenty twenty six, there's actual and projected losses of twenty million. So, can you understand how overtime, again, there's some dips, but it trends upward, yet twenty million in the hole from. Uh twenty twenty to twenty twenty six, how does that reconcile?
Um I I can answer that, um there was a decision, uh if council remembers, way back, probably twenty twenty one. I'm sorry, I cannot read it, and my computer is dead, but one of those years, uh while I was the finance director. We had decided to move about ten million dollars from our general fund as a part of the reserve, so one of the things that is. Important for council to remember is, there's general fund, and then there's many other funds, um and there's another fund called Economic Development Fund. That is a fund that we utilize for any economic development, it's been mostly um utilized for our. Reuse facility, the farm services, which is essentially where we land apply the the reuse water. That has been processed, and uh there, with all of the work that is going on in the reuse facility. The idea was that we're going to need significant more uh land, and so we had moved that money into that. Economic Development Fund, so you might see a drop in general fund, and this is my error, as I'm hearing you. React to this graph, um I'm realizing that I need to do a better job at reflecting that information. There was about ten or twelve million dollars that we had removed from general fund re- reserve to Economic Development Fund. To be able to buy those lands, we have not bought those lands yet. And we're looking at, uh with the first year of experience, uh next year with the with the operation of the reuse facility. Staff is looking at exactly what kind of and how much land we're going to need, um so that we're not over purchasing. So, you do have about twelve or fourteen million dollars in Economic Development Fund on top of what is reflected there. And we'll make sure to revise it and make sure that you have the uh more reflective information.
And then, just a a couple of points, the uh, you know, part of the reason that we're facing this deficit is because previous councils for a number of years. Have not raised taxes, as was mentioned, and it's frustrating when I remember. Even as a little kid, paying attention to the city council stuff, council members would run for reelection, and their big thing was, I haven't raised taxes. And that was just super short sighted, and now we get to, you know, all of us get to deal with the consequences of that. And um on top of that, the most recent, I think, kind of flub was a previous council adding a hundred and fifty employees. Based on assumptions, like it says in the presentation, and we all know um what assumptions are, and so it's just. It just sucks that, you know, any random idiot, frankly, can get elected to council, I'm proof, and then there's consequences that future councils and staff have to deal with. And so I just want to say that, that I'm not placing blame for this on any particular staff members, unlike was mentioned, you know, Mr. Lincoln's been his. Actual city manager role for not even a a full calendar year, so I'm sensitive to that. With adding all those full-time employees based on your Costco coming, they're not coming now, and they're not gonna come. I I would want to see a huge portion of our cuts getting rid of a lot of those positions, I know that's significant, and that sucks, and. Nobody wants layoffs, but part of the reducing headcount is really just a temporary fix in that. When people retire or resign or whatever, we're not gonna fill those positions. Again, that's a good temporary fix, but I'm more interested in long-term solutions instead of temporary fixes, and so I've looked at the list a number of times of the. Positions that were hired, and uh, you know, there's not. Tons of room for cuts that I think would make sense, I don't want to get rid of firefighters and police officers and such, but. As Mr. Grimm mentioned, the city manager's office has doubled, um administrating community services added about twenty percent. C E D added four employees, and animal shelter operations added a significant number, and I understand those costs are shared. But uh that was where the most employees went, and uh it's kind of like um, you know, looking at our our federal taxes, I get ticked off. When I see that, I think it's thirty five billion to date, or something has gone to Israel, that's my money. And so, same in our in our local setting, my money's gonna take care of some dogs that uh some people care about, most probably not. And so, you know, I'd love to see all twenty of those positions eliminated, and um I think we really should take a long, hard look at which positions. We could eliminate, to Mayor Serra's point, without significantly reducing our our level of service. So just some thoughts on that. Uh one thing that would be helpful is in this budget, we've got twenty twenty to twenty three actuals in the twenty five and twenty six, but there's no column for twenty four. It's hard to kind of see a uh, you know, summary of all those years, so if. Maybe it doesn't need to be added to this, because the margins are getting kind of slim, but if we could somehow include twenty four to see a whole trajectory, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, Ms. uh Ms. Buckley is working on uh the details for the twenty four estimate. We tried to give you an annual view, even though we do a biennial budget, and sometimes when you're trying to break apart those two years. It gets a little bit tricky, so that is why we excluded it, but in next year's, uh next week's presentation. You're going to see um that twenty twenty four estimate. Not at that line level, but if you'd like, we can, we can start working on it, but it would be more rolled up.
Again, like I mentioned, uh touched on a little bit, using reserves doesn't fix the problem, and so I think. When we go through these um, you know, opportunities and ideas, more than half of them are temporary solutions. So I really would like us to focus on what's the problem that has been existing for five to six years, and what's the long-term solution, not a Band-Aid fix. And um like you mentioned with the the lean uh way of doing business, I think that'd be very helpful, and. All this reminds me when I, when I got in the Air Force, which was two thousand and ten, um right after the housing crisis, we were cutting budgets left and right. And um that was a a planner, long-range planner in the Air Force, and we did an annual planning conference every year at some random base, and we would fly there and. And we did an annual planning conference every year at some random base and we would fly there and uh, assign trips and just and whatnot. Those stopped during those budget cuts and we did them via Zoom before Zoom was popular. And so things like that. Um, as was mentioned, you can do some trainings online or have the presenter come here. Then we really need to look into stuff like that. Um, what I'd really like to see, and I'm assuming this will be with the department budget specifically, will be exactly where the city's proposing cuts. Or there's gonna mainly be shown the, okay. With the ARPA funds, we all know those were one-time uh, funding sources. But it looks like they were used for employees. And so the question, why would one-time funding, like the grants for fires, why would we use one-time funds for? For employees, for paying wages?
Uh, I believe there was just one position um, that was used and that was the community outreach position at the time. Uh, which would have met the requirements of the grant itself. Um, however, it was a request from the council that we permanently fund that position. But at that time for uh, for the time being, because it met the um, uh, the interest of the grant, the requirement of the grant. We would have just utilized the position for that. And then it would come out of general fund for future years.
One question, I don't think it'll be able to be answered tonight, but uh, next week it'd be nice if we could see what percent. Of the increases in each department, because there are some increases that I I would call, you know, uncontrollable. Um, mainly personnel benefit, cost increases like social security, retirement, uh, workers' comp life insurance. It's not like we can just cut those, you know. But one thing I'd like to know is of the increases that do exist, what percent of those increases is from those personnel benefits? That um, we, you know, kinda have to have, that'd be uh, very helpful for me. You know, because I can see in some departments, it looks like, wow, they cut a million dollars. But this section is, you know, five hundred thousand dollars more than it was last year. And you start kinda breaking it down and um, it's hard to. Be able to pick all that apart without knowing what other trouble expenses can we, I guess we could reduce, but that we don't wanna reduce, you know. Okay, the um. Desperate times call for desperate measures, right? And there's a significant number of items in the budget. Uh, that I think we could cut eighty percent across the board. I'll caveat by saying, maybe I don't completely understand exactly what it's for. But train registration, tuition, professional services, lodging, meals, miles, airfare, vehicle rent. Auto allowance for departments, induced subscriptions and memberships. I haven't seen a single department that cut any of those. Uh, there's a couple of departments that cut their vehicle rent. And so one question I'll have for the directors is, you know, why was your department able to cut vehicle rent completely? And other departments quadrupled their budget for vehicle rent. And then. I really wanna hear from directors why they're not completely cutting things like lodging, meals, miles and airfare. And I mean, if we really wanna get. Um, serious about these cuts, then I think all of that, again, it's a temporary fix, but for a time. Conferences and so's are completely unnecessary, in my opinion. Again, like I mentioned, the Mary Force Experience, we didn't do those and work still got done. Um, there may be a few exceptions, but I think we should not plan for the exception. Um, but, you know, really get serious. Um, and and then just last thought again, like I mentioned, the I really wanna hone in on what is the problem? Not just this year, but in previous years, and what's the s- long-term solution? That in two years, we're not gonna be having the same conversation. And maybe it takes longer than that, but future councils won't be dealing with us not doing our job appropriately. Um, other than that, like I mentioned, I've got um, just pages in a folder just full of questions and I'd rather just um. So taking everybody's time, just meet the two of you and kinda go over some of that in depth. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, before we move on, I'll just kind of wrap this up. Obviously, it sounds like this is the first cut and we've got. Some cuts, I'll tell you on the cut. Um, you know, obviously, I'm grateful that we've. Thought ahead with making sure we have strong reserves. Uh, the worst-case scenario we can do is start dipping into them too heavily. Planning for a strong recovery and then not seeing that. Um, obviously, we don't know. Yeah, I mean, we can all. Own up the fact that we're in a presidential year and things are gonna change regardless of uh, which new administration we get. Um, so. But we can't bank on anything at this point. It's all unforeseen and uncertain. But I do think. As we have these hard conversations, um, as we look at the departmental budgets, uh, requests, I think that'll be extremely helpful. Um, and I do, I do wear a little on my sleeve, you know, having been part of the prior council that have, you know, reluctantly adopted some of the. Big lifts that uh, are impacting us now. Um, obviously, I think we thought the turnaround post-COVID would be a little different. And I think it was trending that way and then uh, it's trying to back down. Um, so with that, you know, we're gonna move forward. We're gonna make sure that. You know, let's, let's echo this. We're gonna make sure that the city's in a strong financial position. We're not going to. Spend our way into oblivion. Um, we've seen too many cities, even local cities that we're seeing in the news that are having some serious heartburn. One thing that I I wanna echo that Mr. Harpster said, and I think we all have the same sentiment. Um, I'm very grateful and happy and proud that Pasco's with its growth rate has actually gotten. To become a safer city than it has been historically. Um, we wanna make sure that those safety services and lifeline services are still there. Um, you know, whether I call police or, you know, anyone else does or fire, we wanna make sure you guys are all accessible. Um, you know, doesn't mean that there might be some squeak, might not be squeezed, but we do need your services. So we realize there are certain absolute. You know, integral services to to protecting the people of Pasco. Um, and before I keep spinning too far down, I don't, I don't wanna, you know. Have folks feel like their work isn't important or isn't seen. Um, because everyone's work in the city, it has been critical. To the growth. I mean, the road construction that we're seeing, all the services, our contract with our partners like BDI. Um, it's all critical and but I guess there is a button. We'll figure out what it looks like to make sure that we're all. Um, staffed at the right level and taking care of our residents. So with that, we'll move on to item eleven B, which is Pasco School District Impact Fees. That's gonna go, I believe, to Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayors and members of council. Uh, briefly, I'll I'll briefly outline. Uh, the role and the impact of school impact fees, particularly as they relate to uh, Pasco's continued growth in the school system's capacity. Uh, to accommodate uh, new students. Um, school impact fees are one-time charge on new residential developments designed to address the. Capacity needs created by that growth. Uh, the fees are used exclusively to fund capacity-related projects. Excuse me, included in the school district's capital facilities plan, uh, which is uh, adopted into the city's comprehensive plan. Um, these funds uh, can't be the sole source of fu- sole source of funding for school projects and must be spent within ten years as required by state law. Uh, the calculation of these fees is based on a formula that's aligned with the Growth Management Act. Um, the formula accounts for uh, growth-related. Facilities, the needs and insured, the needs um, uh, that uh, it that needs and ensures that only a portion of the cost of a building, new schools are allocated. Uh, to the new housing developments. Uh, this includes factors like student generation rate, which measures the number of students coming from new housing units. Um, over the past several years, uh, the city of Pasco has collected significant funds through impact fees. For example, in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we collected over two point four million dollars in school impact fees and a large portion of those are then distributed back over to the school districts. Um, so on this slide is just a a few uh, baseline um, um. Uh, uh, tools or information, the ordinance for City of Pasco was adopted in twenty twelve. It aligns with the Pasco School District Policy of nine two two three, which is attached to the staff report and certainly aligns with. Uh, the JMA requirements in um, eighty-two oh two oh. Um, the uh, impact fee for a single family is forty-seven. A hundred dollars and the impact for a multifamily dwelling unit is uh, four thousand five hundred and twenty-five uh, dollars. I I do wanna note that um, last fall, uh, city council did adopt a deferral program for all residential um, housing projects. So. Uh, developments that um, uh, apply and request an impact fee deferral. Um, are now allowed to have one under the new um, uh, ordinance adopted by council. Uh, this slide may be a little bit difficult to see on the screen here, but it's intended to demonstrate um, the impact fees collected in blue. And the uh, those collected by the school district in green, so you can see kind of the slight um, uh, variation between the two, but pretty steady. Uh, two point three million in twenty seventeen, three million in twenty nineteen, and uh, two point four million in uh, tw- uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, the school district is required uh, by ordinance uh, to uh, uh, prepare and present a report to city council. Uh, uh, that covers both the impact fee, um, the amounts collected and what the fees um, have covered. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-three, for example, the school district uh, used the funds to support uh, the remodeling of the digital and remote teaching and learning center. Um, the school district uh, updates the city council on its capital facilities plan and impact fees. Uh, those presentations occurred in twenty-seven, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh, there was um. A couple of years with no presentations, I presume due to the uh, uh, COVID. Um, and uh, the most recent was in January twenty twenty-three. Um, I I just wanna note that given the most recent school presentation uh, from superintendent that the the Spasco School District operates. Uh, twenty-five schools serving more than nineteen thousand students uh, with over twenty-six hundred employees. So with that. Uh, brief overview of the school impact fees um, uh, that um, are collected by the city, then redistributed, redistributed. Uh, back to the school district. So um, I'm happy to answer as any uh, any questions I can for council this evening. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I see you, Mr. Prowliss.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Wh- when was the last time, it says forty-seven hundred dollars and then forty-five for multifamily. When's the last time that was updated?
I I believe it was twenty sixteen, but I I I wanna confirm that, but I know there were several presentations where the impact fee was not asked to be increased.
Okay, so it's been the same for many years. Okay. Um, and we're supposed to reevaluate. So I remember Michelle Whitney, uh, Superintendent Michelle Whitney said something that. They're doing some study and it needs to be recalculated and perhaps um, they could not qualify for that anymore. Is that, that my correct understanding? So. Is that just like recent or I guess what I'm trying to understand is like, eh, what if, so that hasn't been done? Is that supposed to be done every two years? On behalf of the school district for that, that revaluation?
Yes, and and the school district would report that to city council.
And so I guess if they haven't done that, could they be held liable for continuing assessing that?
No, I think what Mr. Gonzalez is saying is they have been doing that.
So they have been rev- oh, okay. So they're not sure going forward?
No, that's why they come back.
Okay.
Yeah, so they've been, they've been making those reports, but I I think this one is basically overdue since the last one. So, but no, they have the statute, I. The impact fee, school impact fee statute is is uh, definitely a specialty. Uh, and their attorney. Uh, the knows it backwards and forwards. So uh, we can get that information and figure out uh, what exactly, but they, they work really hard to make sure they're complying with the statute.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Prowliss. Uh, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gonzalez, just curious about the the fees retained by the city. Is that just some type of administrative fee? And I guess, you know, I see a lot of fluctuation. I mean, we are talking small amounts. I see thirty-seven ninety-one in twenty twenty-two and. Looks like eighty-five oh eight, don't take this for an eye test, in twenty twenty-three. But um. Did, does that cover our cost of, you know, running this program for, really on their behalf?
It's the administrative fee that's uh, um, a part of the ordinance adopted by city council. So in twenty twenty-three. Um, uh, eight thousand nine hundred and eight was retained by the city.
Okay, does that cover our cost for doing this? Do you know? Or maybe that's a better question for Ms. Buckley or something or?
I I think it might be a, uh, yeah, I don't have the answer to that, but I would assume we'd need some more evaluation. Thank you.
It would be good to look at it again and and it goes through a couple of different departments' hands. And so looking at the time that's spent would be a good place to. Invest a little bit of.
I like that. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Mr. Um, Harpster.
Uh, just a few comments and then one question. Uh, the, in, Mr. Gonzalez, you confirm my recollection. If if I recall, you've done last couple of years, city did a, a study of development fees in the city. Uh, eh, I think with HBA and uh, Realtors Association, found that without the school impact fee. Pasco, Kenwood, and Richland are all pretty close. Once you had that school impact fee, then Pasco becomes the most expensive place to develop. Is that right?
Uh, that's correct. For one single family uh, dwelling, the school impact fee is approximately seventy percent of total impact fees.
Okay. Um, so, so what that effectively does is makes Pasco the most expensive place to develop. Which then makes Pasco the most expensive place to buy a home. And um, you know, since this ordinance was passed by council in two thousand and twelve. I I had the numbers at one point, but I don't recall um, what they were. Uh, the school district secured several hundred millions of dollars uh, worth of bonds. Um, for improvements. And um, as Mr. Lincoln mentioned in the budget presentation, they count for forty-five percent of our uh, property taxes. And so, you know, getting this school impact fee ends up becoming just another tax uh, for homeowners. Um, seventeen million dollars worth since two thousand and seventeen. So um. Just for future knowledge, when we look at other development fees, my question's for Mr. Ferguson. If I. Um, again, recall correctly, to get rid of an ordinance, you pass another ordinance, repealing that ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So anything uh, to repeal an ordinance, it takes another ordinance, but I I don't know what the requirements are to repeal this, the school impact fee. We can certainly uh, figure out what those would be. Um, I don't know what other, a lot of times there's other uh, requirements when you uh, take on these particular. Types of impact fees that uh, you're, you're not able to necessarily uh, get out of them exactly as you would in other ordinance, but I don't, so I don't want to talk at a turn, but.
Yeah, the, and, you know, in the thing of a week or two, we're having another discussion on. Other impact fees and um, but I would like to revisit this in the future and. Um, help get the city in line with other, with our our uh, neighbors across the river as far as. Uh, development costs and then, of course, costs for housing. Um, for those looking to buy a new single-family residence. So. Uh, that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'll just kinda wrap it in. Uh, my thoughts is, you know, certainly. To this point, it seems as though the impact fees have had some benefit, but it also sounded like, as as we've mentioned here, uh, according to. Ms. Whitney, the school district may not even qualify for these, so this may be a moot point. I don't recall getting a hard date by which we would hear from her. Do you? No?
I I don't believe she had one. It was still pretty preliminary when I talked to her a couple of weeks ago, but I'll follow up with her and and find out if I can get that for you.
Perfect. I I think that'd be most helpful, understanding where they are in their process. And then um, you know, subsequent to that, I think. We have several paths in a fourth road and we'll see which path, uh, you know, which question, questions we wanna push forward. With that, we'll move on to item number twelve, which is miscellaneous discussion. Uh, Mr. Lincoln.
October fifteenth? October fifteenth is going to be the last day for uh, irrigation. So that's something to mark on your calendars if you're on the City of Pasco irrigation system. That's all I've got.
Thank you for following up on that. I did have that question and I appreciate that answer. Cause I'll need to get some Boy Scouts out there, cause I will not likely be home. Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just thought it's important to note since it's October seventh, this is um, the one-year anniversary of really the biggest loss of. Jewish life since the Holocaust. And I think that's pretty significant to make mention of. Um, more city-related though. Um, I reached out to staff um, in recent days, just wanted to maybe, I know we have a lot on our plate, but possibly discuss. Um, park closing times, um, especially down near Mister, where Mr. Milney is in Chihuahua. I had some um, people that I know down there just complaining of just the people that can drive in, you know, sunset. Man, even tonight, coming to the meeting, it was basically in the dark and that, you know, most of the people driving into the park at eight, nine o'clock at night. Um, typically aren't up to the best behavior that is becoming of a good citizen and. Um, you know, just wondering if, you know, there's a conversation that can be had at some point to, you know, look at winter hours. I don't know if it's a. You know, half hour after sunset. And I appreciate Mr. Lincoln's, you know, response that, you know, even if we're to gate things that, you know, people could still. There's a walking path down there where people can, you know, get in, you know, besides that. But I think it really is, you know, probably the car traffic that is causing the most. Significant issues. But again, I find myself at the same spot. We are a lot where, you know, the. The bad behavior of a very few are affecting the liberty of the majority. And that just pains me to, you know. That that we have to look at those things about, you know, restricting access to, you know, the parks for. The people are gonna use them as they are intended for, uh, because a few, you know, bad actors are um. N- not behaving in a way that um, yeah, is good for probably them or the city. So. You know, I don't know how much of an issue it is in the summer, but it's just, you know, it's the winter when it starts getting dark at five o'clock and. You know, let's face it, people are, you know, up to no good a lot of times, so. You know, let's face it, people are, you know, up to no good a lot of times, so.
So is that your ask that we put that on a twenty twenty four agenda item?
Or just, I mean, I think it's the winter months that are the the real issue, and um, you know, I I'd be curious, you know, what the rest of council thinks. Or if they've heard anything, or?
Um, I'd say anecdotally, the park by my house, there are always cars parked there regardless. But it's a very residential park, uh, so I may have some different opinion there. Uh, what I would say is, from my perspective, I think there's probably some investigation we could have from staff, but pushing it in this calendar year. That I would, I would be strongly opposed to that, but that's just me.
Totally understand, and and I guess for the sake of clarification too, I don't know if it's every city park we need to look at, but you know, maybe just a couple of the problem ones and. Anyways.
Anyone have any additional thoughts on that request briefly?
Uh, I would be in favor of that, I I used to live by a park where there's a lot of people, kids lighting things on fire, so. I would appreciate probably more enforcement in those, at at least in the problem parks.
I'd be willing to look into that, as far as if the staff said they had the resources, do that, we should look into it and see if the. Closing of gates or time or whatever is prudent in this particular instance, so I'm for that.
So is this something we need to address this year?
I I would think the budget would be more priority, but um, that's something we can work with PD, you know, I wouldn't mind doing that, right?
So I think at least a clear direction for now is have staff start poking into this. Whether or not it gets presented this year, I think will depend on what the results are, is that fair? Okay.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, Ms. Blaze, though.
As much as I love staying till eleven o'clock at night. Um, is there any way we could bump our meetings to start at six instead of seven?
Um, I don't, I'm not going to commit to even showing up before seven, so I'll just tell you that, that if you guys. You can certainly vote and, but I can't guarantee I'll be here before seven. So, I mean, that's just, that's me. Um, that, again. That's a potential dissenting opinion, that's it, so if the rest wants to go to s- at six, we'll see where we go. Anyone weigh in there?
I would just comment that uh, as a business owner, it's a lot times hard to be here at six, I mean, I I could. Have staff actually cover, but you still need to count tills, so we need to get all the customers, I have customers at six fifteen in my store. And we close at five thirty, so it's hard to get people out of the store if they're spending money. Um, so I prefer the seven o'clock, um, I did sign up for this, so if it's eleven o'clock, it's eleven o'clock, you guys are all still here, so. I did campaign for this spot, so I'm willing to take yeah, whatever happens, so it's eleven, it's eleven. I'm just saying, it's uh, yeah, it's bad, but uh, you know, I did sign up for it, so.
Do we have anyone pro sixer?
I'd say, you know, s- six is fine, I just prefer whatever's good, what the rest of council is, I would go along with.
Uh, same here, I don't, I don't have a preference, I mean, I I think on agenda, um, with the agenda items like we had today, I think starting early would have been beneficial. Or put in some of those things on a different night, um, you know, I I would think we should be cognizant of of the timeframe, you know, I would say. It'd be nice to probably just have certain items that can. Um, may fill out a three hour window, you know, on the worst case, you know, rather than four hours, you know. The time we get out is me eleven thirty, so that'd be my only advice for that. Um, but yeah, I'd be willing to do whatever the council wants, rest of council wants.
Yeah, I don't own that, I mean, Mr. Lincoln and I were kicking back from forth and Mr. Harpster too emails and. I kept looking at it, thinking, where do we cut, given what we have to achieve over the next ninety days? So I I didn't think there was a whole lot of fat on the meeting to cut, unfortunately, it just, it's one of those, um. So yeah, but I I will try to be more cognizant if I think there's a way to trim something. Um, well, I mean, I'll, I'll keep, keep working with him on that. So I'm thinking, I I hear.
Kind of two no's.
My opinion is we stay at seven, we briefly discussed our, at our retreat, and the consensus then was to stay at seven and. You know, just like when uh, UW Michigan played in the title game, we talked about moving it, but this is the frickin' job we signed up for. And it starts at seven, and so, you know, this is not even the latest council meeting in the last two years, there was. A complement application meeting that went to like eleven thirty, and um, just a year and a half or a so ago. Um, I uh, watched a lot of the council meetings in Tri-Cities. And so I often get recommended random council meetings from around the country, and just for the hell of it, I watch them. And there's random councils, I think it was in Texas, they went till two in the morning, and so uh, you know. Bring your coffee, would be my opinion.
Alrighty, well, I think for now, we're gonna stick it at seven, if uh, we want to make a subsequent motion, we can go from there. Uh, looks like um, I'm not sure who was first, Mr. Harpster.
Uh, yeah, just two quick items, one, in light of the public comments this evening, I wanted to express my appreciation for our uh, law enforcement officers and park ranger. Um, for their ongoing efforts to address the homeless situation. Um, the commenter was sitting on the sidewalk when I was driving to the meeting, screaming and yelling at traffic with a bunch of crap. In the way of the parking area, and so I just appreciate the enforcement that's going on there. Um, lastly, none of us were able to attend because of the meeting, but today is the twenty five year anniversary. Of the death of Washington State Trooper James Saunders, and um, there's a memorial tonight that's uh, ends at eleven PM. Um, he was shot during a traffic stop, and um, tonight, his widow and his parents are speaking at the twenty five year anniversary along with Chief Rossky. Um, who was one of the first ones on the scene at that time, he was a sergeant, and the other two officers there was my dad and um, Officer Kirk King. And um, uh, so, since him, no other officer has been killed in line of duty in Tri-Cities, and it's been twenty five years, but um. The uh, it just uh, is a good um, reminder of the level of danger. That our officers face every day during just something simple as a traffic stop, and uh, you know, his uh, he had a baby girl at the time and. Um, she grew up without a dad, and um, because of the profession he chose, which keeps us all safe, and so um. Just wanted to uh, make note of that.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster, Mr. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor, um, first thing, I was wondering if we can turn down the AC in here, it's like really freezing, um. Yeah, I was gonna say at the last time, like, I don't know, but then tonight, I was like, Jesus, just pumping in here, so we can turn it down just a little bit, that'd be great, um, that was all I had.
I think you're gonna struggle with that, I may have to never wear a coat again, because I was quite warm tonight, um. Maybe let's do a doodle pull or something like that, just quick behind the scenes work. With that. Our forty five minute executive session does not exist tonight, so item number thirteen, executive session is, there is none needed. It is now ten fifty nine, yes, we beat eleven, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for sticking around with us.